Good evening, West Orange, on this nice, wet May day. And thank you all for coming and braving the weather tonight. And for those at home, you did the right thing and stayed home. You'll watch it nice and roasty toasty. So, thank you for coming. Madam Clerk, thank you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino-
Present.
Councilwoman Krokoviac-
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown-
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney-
Present.
Council President Guarino-
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for coming tonight. First up tonight, and thank you to Lisa Fohory for taking and changing places. We have Mayor's Proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 7, 2019. So I'd like the folks who are here tonight, for the organization, to come up to the podium. And I'd like to make the presentation for the mayor. Now I'm a little dryer. I can put my jacket on. Good evening, West Orange, on this nice, wet May day. And thank you all for coming and braving the weather tonight. And for those at home, you did the right thing and stayed home. You'll watch it nice and roasty toasty. So, thank you for coming. Madam Clerk, thank you.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino-
Present.
Councilwoman Krokoviac-
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown-
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney-
Present.
Council President Guarino-
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you all for coming tonight. First up tonight, and thank you to Lisa Fohory for taking and changing places. We have Mayor's Proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, which is June 7, 2019. So I'd like the folks who are here tonight, for the organization, to come up to the podium. And I'd like to make the presentation for the mayor. Now I'm a little drier. I can put my jacket on. Good evening to you all tonight. Thank you for coming tonight and braving the weather. And it's a very important thing that you do, and what we say, and to wear orange, and that we demand action. And it's something that's very, very important, and something that the American people, and the people in our community, need to be really, really diligent on. It's important. It's for our children. It's for our families. And it's something that I greatly admire you for, for what you're doing, taking your time, and getting other parents to really participate. And I always wish you success. And I know I can tell on behalf of my council colleagues that we fully support your actions and duties, and will always be there for you. So, Mayor's Proclamation for June 7, and I'll read it, and then anyone who'd like to make some comments, you're more than welcome. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on the average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other high-income countries, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas the mayor and law enforcement officers know their communities' best, are most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Peddleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 22nd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the 100 Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, the National Coalition of Organizations has designated June 7, 2019, the first Friday in June, as the Fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 7, the first Friday in June, in 2019, to help raise awareness and gun violence, and whereas by wearing orange on June 7, 2019, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe, number one issue. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Robert D. Parisi of the Township of West Orange declares the first Friday in June, June 7, 2019, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all to support their local communities and their efforts to prevent tragic effects of gun violence and to honor human lives. Submitted respectfully, Mayor Robert D. Parisi, the Township of West Orange, May 29, 2019.
Hi, my name is Claire Keels. I'm legislatively for the Essex County Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. And on behalf of Moms Demand Action, and frankly, it's, I like to call it Mothers and Others, because we really welcome anybody to work with us against the scourge of gun violence. We want to offer our thanks to the mayor and to the town council for adopting this proclamation and supporting us in raising awareness of gun violence. And we will continue to work as hard as we can, along with our umbrella organization, Every Town for Gun Safety, to bring about gun safety legislation and try to work as hard as we can to make sure that the citizens of the U.S. can again be safe in their schools, in their houses of worship, in their movie theaters, in their cities, in their towns, and essentially everywhere that we have seen gun violence. So, thank you to everyone for offering your support for this. And if I could ask somebody as a quick volunteer to take a photo for us, of us all, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, thank you all. Okay, moving right along, I'd like to ask Lisa Fohory from the West Orange Public Library to come up with activities that are coming up at the public library.
Good evening, everybody. Lisa Fohory, 201 Gregory Avenue, and President of the Board of Trustees of the West Orange Public Library. A quick update on some of the things that are going on at the library. Our youth services librarian is working with the municipal grant writer on a Best Buy grant for technology for teens. The plan is to work in parallel with the West Orange school system, so the library technology complements what the students are studying in class, and it'll give them more time for independent exploration once school is out in the afternoon. The Friends of the West Orange Public Library had a very successful book and plant sale earlier this month. Thank you to Councilwoman Krokoviac and Councilwoman Castellino for your friendship. The Friends will also be selling CDs and DVDs from the collection at the Street Festival on June 1, so you can stop by to learn more about becoming a friend of the library and to pick up some bargains in the meantime. Some quick statistics for you. We added nearly 2,700 adult, teen, and children's books since the start of the year. Our reference questions are up 64% January through April compared to the same period last year, which we consider a victory against Google. Ask a librarian. And our total circulation year-to-date is up 5%. A major upcoming program is our summer reading program. That's an annual event. And the family kickoff, you are all invited Monday, June 24, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. There is a separate teen kickoff, and that will be Wednesday, June 26, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Next up is another important issue facing our young people and facing our family and our communities, other than gun violence in the world. I'd like to invite Ms. Tammy Williams up to make a presentation on the West Orange Suicide Coalition.
All right. Good evening. My name is Tammy Williams, 16 Hillside Avenue, and I introduce to you the West Orange Suicide Advocacy Coalition. The logo was created by Pragma Paragamita, a student at West Orange High School. She is a senior, graduation class of 2019. Many years ago, but what still feels like just yesterday, my phone rang. My younger sister was just a freshman in college, and she was on the other end. In high school, she had been voted Miss Carver High School, the equivalent of homecoming queen, elected secretary of her senior class, varsity cheerleader co-captain, Ebony Society, Spanish Society, youth and young adult choir member, served on the usher board of our home church in North Carolina. But that evening, she called to say, "I just want you to know, I will always love you." I knew something was very wrong. I did my best to keep her talking, but my best wasn't good enough. And after pleading for what seemed like forever, I could not keep her on the phone just talking. The next phone call is the phone call you never want to answer, but answer the call you must. Oh, just a down arrow. So, from the ninth floor of her dormitory window, she took her life. And that is why I stand before you today, asking you to let's talk about it. Devastated by the loss of my younger sister, when she was a freshman in college, committed to the promise that I made to her, that I would honor her legacy and help other young teenagers in need, inspired by Lionel Hush, the principal at Roosevelt Middle School, who held the Suicide Prevention and Awareness Workshop for middle school parents and students in 2018, interest from the communities to support awareness by polling via social media, mechanisms, and having conversations in the community. National statistics indicate that increased conversations erases the stigma and reduces the risk of suicide incidents. The high number of suicides and suicide attempts in our community, based on West Orange Police Department statistics for 2017 and 18, that's why I feel we must talk about it. So what we know is that our work will acknowledge that suicide is a public health issue. Suicide does not have just one single cause. There are multiple factors, alone and in combination, including, but not limited to substance abuse and untreated depression, that can increase the risk of suicide. Suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, according to the Centers for Disease Control Statistics in 2017. Suicide is a public health issue. In taking a public health approach, we recognize that various structures, as well as a lack of access to these structures, influence our health and well-being, including schools and employment, families, interpersonal relationships, how the three branches of government, legislative laws, executive, police, and corrections, and judicial, court-imposed sanctions, impact each of us differently. Spirituality and faith-based institutions, recreational opportunities, internal conflicts between township cultures and race, ethnic and religious cultures. Other risk factors include research. Evidence finds that several biosocial health factors may also increase the risk of self-inflicted harm and early life termination. These include physical health, low serotonin, mental health. Depression elevates suicide risks, but researchers argue that it's not the cause. Self-efficacy, control over one's life, and self-esteem, the perception of oneself. WOSAT, the West Orange Suicide Advocacy Coalition goals are to increase access to resources, more support groups and information shared in the community, gather and organize materials, brochures that aid schools, families, and police officers who respond to suicide calls and attempts, support more public conversation about risks and related suicide information, increase suicide support group attendance, reduce the suicide rate so that the current rate does not increase in and around West Orange. Our major initiatives will be to engage the public by partnering with organizations to host awareness events and disseminate information about suicide prevention. Supplement suicide prevention and mental health resources to the West Orange community and schools, use the nationally recognized suicide prevention materials, resources, and programs. Work with the township and school community to identify professionals and businesses to make our township a suicide-free zone. Identify and create grief packets to be distributed by first responders for town residents who are seeking information on coping with the loss from suicide or suicide attempts. Our upcoming activities include hosting an informational booth at our West Orange Street Fair to distribute information and introduce the organization to our township. Our call to action is to support our schools with the September National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. We will be partnering with the Grassroots Foundation, as well as our public schools. In our public schools, we already know that they do recognize Mental Health Awareness, as well as Mental Health Week. September 9 through the 13, we will distribute green ribbons to all of our students, and we will encourage everyone in the town to wear green. October 6, we will host our first West Orange Run for Zack at Rock Spring Country Club, our 5K. So, you might ask, who is Zack? Zack was an advocate and a voice for human rights. Zack saw the goodness in many people. He had an opinion on many issues and stood steadfast in his beliefs. His strong moral compass could lead him to become argumentative, headstrong, and stubborn. Zack was known for being the life of the party. His interests included running, boxing, mixed martial arts, video games, music, movies, science, mind exploration, expansion, travel, and adventure. In his early twenties, his career aspirations included modeling and acting. The camera loves Zack. The two women in Zack's life were his mom, and I'm going to ask her to wave her hand, and his girlfriend of four and a half years. He loved them most, and he argued with them the most. He and his girlfriend had dreams to marry, have children, and build their future together. Zack, a 2011 West Orange High School graduate, was the last person you would think of that would abruptly, tragically, and violently end his 24-year young life that was filled with abounding potential. Zack touched so many people then and now, and will be forever missed, loved, and remembered for being an amazing young man. Like too many others gone too soon, who struggled with a reason to hold on. We will run for Zack to encourage others to ask for help and to know that they are loved. Mr. Hush introduced a workshop last year. Former Governor Cody, just this month, introduced his mental health initiatives at Liberty Middle School with a special initiative focusing on teen suicide. West Orange is very fortunate to have specific advocates around both mental health and suicide prevention. In our middle schools last year, we had both low and high-risk incidents where our students sought help from our guidance counselors. We need this coalition. In our schools, current laws require that instruction in suicide prevention be included in an appropriate place in the curriculum of our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools. S3172 provides that instruction in suicide prevention will also include mental health as it relates to suicide prevention. The instruction must incorporate evidence-based standards and be adapted to the age and understanding of the students. The bill also provides elements that may be included as part of the instruction. The concept of wellness, including self-care and personal responsibility for one's own mental health and wellness. The concept of mental health as an integral part of health. Recognition of the warning signs of suicide. Awareness of the risk of suicide and self-harm. The relationship between mental health, substance abuse, and other negative coping behaviors. The negative impact of stigma and cultural attitudes toward mental illness. The implications of risk factors, protective factors, and resiliency on mental health and wellness. Identifying appropriate professionals, services, and family supports for suicide prevention. Suicide statistics and facts. Again, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States for all ages. Every day, approximately 123 Americans die by suicide. There is one death by suicide in the United States every 12 minutes. Depression affects 20 to 25% of Americans aged 18 and over in a given year. An estimated quarter million people each year become suicide survivors. There is one suicide for every estimated 25 suicide attempts. Based on the 2017 Youth Risk Behaviors Survey, 7.4% of youth in grades 9 through 12 reported that they had at least one suicide attempt in the past 12 months. Female students attempted almost twice as often as male students. Black students reported the highest rate of attempts. 2.4% of all students reported making a suicide attempt that required treatment by a doctor or nurse. In West Orange, in 2017 through 18, there were four reported suicides in our township and 50 reported suicide attempts. Let's talk about it. You can't always see pain, but we can erase the stigma. We can know the signs, and we can all prevent suicide. I'd like to thank these individuals for making a contribution to creating this coalition. Those individuals include Dr. James Johnson Diaz, Susan McCartney, Michelle Castellino, Lieutenant Michael Cassidy, Ken Alper, Suzanne Pennell, Cindy Rensler, Pastor Douglas Adams, Marcia Salkofeskin, Richard Trink, Jerry Guarino, Heidi Rothman, Chief James Abbott, Captain Michael Cowley, Lauren Masseter. They all gave of their time, talent, and expertise to formulate this coalition and to Pragya Paramita for allowing us to use her interpretation of what she names "My Project Simp" as artwork for the logo of the coalition. We hope to continue to raise awareness and aid in the prevention of suicide in our community and beyond. Thank you for your time, and we hope to make West Orange a suicide-free zone. Thank you. Waste information will be available online, so we hope to see all of you at the race. And if you want information at the booth, we'll be at the Street Fair on Saturday. Please feel free to stop by. And again, we thank you. Ms. Masseter has been a tremendous supporter, and just please keep her in your prayers. She is, and I'm sure she is comfortable with me sharing, she is a suicide survivor. She is a mother of a suicide. Zack, who attempted suicide just last year, and she is the inspiration for making sure this happens for us. So please keep her in your prayers. She is a shining star. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you all. And Zack's mom, thank you. You know, it's a hurtful thing. It's something, and my council colleagues, and I know the whole township, support you and are there to support you through this travel and this journey that you're making. And just remember, your West Orange family is here for you. Tammy, thank you for your great work and- Tammy, thank you for your great work, and I hope I gave you enough time. So, and we'll see you Saturday at the street fair. That ends our conference agenda. I'm not hiding from my council colleagues. I'm just saying, besides taking the screen up and down, up and down.
Mayor?
Yeah, Evie Mayor.
I need to open up the meeting.
Behind the curtain.
Yeah, behind the curtain. Incognito tonight.
There's, on the conference agenda, there's a redevelopment update as well. Maybe we ought to get that before we close the meeting.
Councilman Krokovia is asking for an update on redevelopment?
It's just on the agenda.
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have any updates. I tried to get a hold of Mr. Diaz over the last couple of days, and he has not returned my calls. Usually when he does that, that means he's out of the country, so I have not gotten any updated information, unfortunately, for tonight.
Oh, in regards to Phase 2 or in general?
Regardless of everything. I mean, I talk, I wanna, I talk to him directly because that's where I get the proper information. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to get in contact with him over the last three days, and usually when he doesn't get back, that means he's usually out of the country.
I'm sorry, I'm the councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Well, I just wanted to give a shout out to the management, Ted, over at Edison Lofts. I had taken a resident over there the other day, and Fran Malkin did a beautiful presentation on the Holocaust. She's a Holocaust survivor and made a presentation at Roosevelt, and they accommodated her, and I was talking to them over there. And so there are more occupancies that have come about. Christina was very generous with her time, walking us around the building, buildings buzzing about. They're not quite at the 150%, at the 50% where we need to, with the jitney service, so Mr. Lepore is working with them in regards to trying to get that up and running for them when they hit that occupancy. But in the interim, he's also supposed to be working with them in regards to tenants that are already there, so they could utilize the jitney service now. Because you have people coming in looking to work in New York in the building, which is exciting, and so they want, they're looking for the transportation. So, he's been meeting with them since I spoke to him last week, so we'll have to ask him for update as well to see where we're at with that, with the jitney over at Edison Lofts. But I just want to thank them for taking their time with the various residents. But the building looks great since we were there the last time, with more decor on the walls and fixtures, and it's simply stunning. So hopefully, the rest of it will be ready to go sooner than later. So, yes, Mr. Sears, as soon as you get that information, you can let us know.
Definitely.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman?
Mr. Sears, this is the first I heard of maybe starting to launch a jitney service there before it reaches the 50% occupancy. Can you tell me, can tell us where that stands? Because I thought the agreement was, we didn't run a jitney service there until they started paying for it.
The agreement that we, that's in the contract, and I've had that discussion with Mr. Diaz.
Okay.
Regarding, when we get to the point we get to, we're gonna come up with a number on what they're gonna pay us.
Okay.
But we haven't come up with that number yet, and we're not there yet.
That was in the agreement.
Yeah, that's in the agreement.
Anytime?
It's in the agreement.
Sorry. Any timeline at this point?
It depends on the number of people that are renting. And the last time I spoke to him, which was last week, we had discussed it, and they were still short of the amount. I don't remember what the exact number was in the contract, but they were short of the amount of bodies that they were supposed to have.
Okay. So, just to clarify, if I could, or maybe you know more about this.
I could clarify.
Yeah, I just, I thought the requirement was they had to be 50% leased.
So, Councilman, so we've had a conversation prior, a couple months back, just to refresh everyone. I'm advocating on their behalf because the bus stop right now is at, jitney stop is at Mississippi Avenue. So they've been having folks drive down to Mississippi Avenue to get the jitney there because they're entitled to it because it stops there, and they're residents. They're technically West Orange residents. The reason, you know, we hope to move this up and have Mr. Lepore work with them is the rentals could go faster if people know, like you're calling to rent in the building, you want to know that a jitney is gonna be stopping there. And so hopefully, moving that along, rentals would go faster if folks already know the stop is right there on the corner now, as opposed, oh yeah, it's coming. So, again, you know, put your, you know, be in the renter's position and wanting to rent the apartment, you want to know, you want to get to work in the morning, you know. So right now, they're letting them, they're driving down to Mississippi Avenue, parking there, Quigley's parking lot, which the residents in that neighborhood are entitled to. And again, there's not that many that are actually commuting every day, but I think it's important to know that the service is offered there, and so the building and that neighborhood fills up, you know, sooner than later, which helps everyone in the neighborhood.
Sure, I don't disagree with the word you said. It's just that we have this agreement, or the legal document. I know, I know we're not following some portions of it, but if there's an agreement of paying money, I want to make sure that we do get the money that is due us, even if we're going to do this a little bit earlier than what the agreement calls for.
Absolutely. And they're, they're tracking, you know, the number of residents that are looking to utilize the service. It's like a catch-22. You want to get things moving, but yet we have to honor, they have to honor the agreement as well, so.
And I appreciate you bringing it up because I was unaware of what was going on. If I could, Mr. Sears, at the last council meeting, I had said it looked like 175 Main Street had, was delinquent in their property taxes. And you said you were gonna check, and you checked, and they eventually paid in the next few days. If you had an influence on that, I just want to say thank you. Do you know why they were late?
I'd like to say I did, but I didn't. And I came in the following day, and I checked, they had come in that late night afternoon to pay them.
Okay. Any reason, do you know reason why they were delinquent? It's typically the...
I have no idea.
Second phase, it's delinquent, okay.
Take credit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any redevelopment? Okay. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Mayor Parisi?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, my colleagues. At this time, we're gonna go out of order, and the next part of our public council meeting will be Mayor Parisi's presentation of the administration's proposed 2019 municipal budget. Mayor Parisi? I can ask my colleagues to come up front, so they can see the presentation.
I don't want you to turn. That's what I said. He goes off.
Good.
Got a lot of microphones here. So Council President, thank you for this opportunity to talk tonight about the municipal budget for 2019. We are a little bit late this year. There's been years where we've been very early, there's been years where we've been a little bit late, there's been years where it's somewhere in the middle. Just as a reminder, and certainly for the public to know, we can never officially pass our budget until the state approves their budget. At the end of June, we are on a different fiscal calendar, a different fiscal year than the state. So although we are a little bit late to have these discussions, we certainly wouldn't pass it officially till the summer anyway. And as a reminder, that's why we all get first and second quarter estimated tax bills. We never really finalize it till the summer. But we are a little bit late, a lot of issues this year to talk about, a lot of things. We were waiting to see how they played out. So we're now here tonight to present the budget and talk a little bit about some of the issues we have. I do want to give everyone fair warning. This is a long presentation. Budgets are complicated documents. This is a complicated process to govern a town of this size. And we all know, governing is the balance between services and costs. We all talk a lot about services that we would like, residents talk about services they would like. It's a matter of the cost. There's always a difference between quantity and quality of services. We'll talk a little bit about that later on. A lot of towns pick up garbage. For example, we pick up garbage at a much higher level, with weekly bulk, with unlimited bulk. So there are differences between services from town to town, and often what we do is a response to residents' concerns. We rely on a professional employee workforce, and we are always doing more with less and juggling the conflicting demands of more service and less taxes. Council members, we all know that very often we are looking at issues that have merit to both sides of them, but they're just simply conflicting positions. We have to govern within the context of a municipal budget. We have to plan for what we're gonna spend money on, and as much as we would like to do a lot of things, we are limited by what we can justify as an elected body and what the residents are willing to pay, and we are always wrestling with the reality of high taxes. But it is important to remember that facts matter when facing these tough choices. Budgeting is complicated. We have a lot of obligations, a lot of obligations that are out of our hands, and as we talk about this as a community over the next several weeks or months, it's important that we look at the facts. We understand where it is we've been, how it is we've got here, and where we plan to go, and some of the obstacles and challenges we face along the way, challenges that were challenges 10 years ago, 20 years, and 30 years ago, they're still challenges today. We like to say, in the administration, that you need good information to make good decisions. So we have a lengthy presentation tonight because we think this information is important, and as we all debate this as a community and a governing body over this next several months, it's important that we have good information to understand where we've been and where we're looking to go. So a five-year tax history, actually it's a 10-year tax history. West Orange has had the second-lowest municipal tax increase of any of the 22 municipalities in Essex County. We were number one of the 22 municipalities until just recently, with the budget that Caldwell passed this year, they became the lowest of the county. But we are the second-lowest since 2008. We'll look a little bit closer at that in a little bit. 60% of the municipalities in Essex County pay more in municipal taxes. That's in actual dollars, actual dollars. 60% of the municipalities pay more than the average household in West Orange does. Budgeting is service responsibilities. What is it? Our obligations do we have as a community? Let's forget about some of the things we'd like to do for residents. What are our obligations? We have to serve 47,000 residents residing in approximately 14,000 households. We have 100 miles of roadways. Below those 100 miles of roadways, we have 100 miles of sewers, we have, within the 12.2 square miles. It's a lot of responsibility we have, and a lot of residents count on us addressing those responsibilities. We have to provide service to 496 commercial and industrial property owners, and we have roughly 100 acres of parkland and township-owned land that we have to take care of 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, every minute of every day. Government is working for the residents of the community, and we can all understand that that comes at a cost. When looking at the township of West Orange, we have challenges compared to neighboring communities. First, and perhaps the biggest, is we have a paid fire department. A lot of towns don't have a paid fire department. We have historically provided unique services to our residents, and we have an overwhelming reliance on residential property tax base. West Orange relies at 83% of our tax base on residential property owners. Now, that's not completely unique to the county. If you look at the rest of the county, you see a lot of them are in that 80, 96% area. If you look specifically at Fairfield, we know of the industry in Fairfield, only 44% reliant on residential properties. Irvington, 75. Roseland, 62. Newark, 51. West Caldwell, 70. Now, Roseland's a great example. When the market's good, everyone wants to be reliant on residential property taxes. But when the market goes bad and real estate goes bad, Roseland took a beating. Becker Farm Road caused them millions and millions of dollars in tax appeals and shortfalls. And when we look later on at the tax increase that were a result of that. So we say it would be nice if we had more industry, but that comes with a plus and a minus depending on the economy. So Roseland, very low-reliant on residential property tax. The problem is when the commercial market bottomed out, they paid a heavy price for that. So though we are 83% reliant on residential property taxes, it's not unlike most of the towns in the county, and even some of these other towns with lower reliance have had their financial issues because of changing markets. So what's included in municipal taxes? Obviously, a public library, we have jitney, snow removal, shredding services, garbage removal, single-stream recycling, recreation programs, fire department, police leaf removals, senior services, 4th of July fireworks, a lot more than we do, but these are some of the things that we provide. Let's look at neighboring towns. Do all of them provide the same services? Everyone always wants to compare taxes from one town to another. It's not fair to compare taxes from town to town without looking at the facts and without understanding that it's never an apples-to-apples comparison. So here, obviously, everyone in this area provides police department. You go to some areas, some more of the rural sections of the county, they don't have police departments. Everyone around here does. And not everyone provides leaf collection. Verona makes residents pick up their leaves. You can't compare taxes with us and Verona without recognizing that if you live in Verona, you have to pay, in some cases, a lot of money to get rid of your leaves every year. In West Orange, you can put them on the street. Not everyone has paid senior services, senior citizen advocates and coordinators. This simply means that we have paid coordinators. But I would argue that we do a lot more for seniors than other towns, especially when you look at senior citizen transportation program. This comparison doesn't look at that. This simply says that Verona and Roseland doesn't even have a paid coordinator. Fireworks, a nice extra in the town, important to me. You see that very few towns even have fireworks in the area. Verona and Livingston among them. A lot of our neighboring towns don't even provide fireworks. If you've been to the fireworks celebration, you know there's thousands of people there. It's one of the biggest crowds we get every year, always a lot of fun, an important community event. Government has to balance the needs, the absolute priorities, as well as creating a sense of community for people. So I believe fireworks is important. Not everyone provides fireworks. This next issue, public library, again, everyone in this area does have what the state calls a free public library. All the X's, the shuttle service, commuter shuttle service, no, none of these neighboring towns have the shuttle service that matches what West Orange does. They're not free, they don't run as many, they don't run as often, and again, most importantly, they're not free to residents. So neighboring towns, all important towns, some of them have their own trains, but we pay a fair amount of money, a commitment we make to the community to help sell the community, to provide them shuttle service. Obviously, every town has to provide snow services, a lot more lately than we've had in the past. Shredding services, it's a relative new service. It's become very popular. We do it a couple times a year. Milburn doesn't provide shredding services. And garbage, again, very different. A lot of people like to compare us to South Orange and Maplewood. Garbage is not included in the property taxes of South Orange and Maplewood. Residents are billed separately by the garbage vendor. So you can't compare taxes when you have to take out the fact that garbage isn't included. And when we get to a couple slides from now, we're gonna see the impact that garbage has on taxes. So it's never fair to compare us to South Orange or Maplewood when you look at the fact that they don't have garbage. And even these towns that do include garbage, we would argue, and we've done the analysis, we provide a much more comprehensive garbage service. Some towns only provide bulk once a month, sometimes twice a year. They don't pick up recycling, sometimes they only pick it up once a month. So our total package is expensive, which we'll get to in a little bit, but it's comprehensive for the residents. Again, we all recycle. Recreation, obviously, a lot of towns do have recreation service. Again, more common in these densely populated areas of the state. There are more rural sections of the state that completely rely on volunteer organizations to run recreation. So again, we might talk about taxes in certain sections of the state. They're not paying for the services that we are. And again, the paid fire department. Verona, Livingston, Roseland, they do not have a paid fire department. It's very likely that they will eventually have to, as it's harder and harder to produce volunteers that will work the length of hours to be on call in a moment's notice. So I don't know how soon it'll be, but I suspect in not-too-long the future, these towns who currently do not have paid fire departments will eventually have to segue to at least pay the EMS service. will eventually have to segue to at least pay EMS services. So here are some things that people never think about. You know, they think employees, they think, you know, pick up my garbage. And that's fine. But townships, we have a lot of responsibilities. Among and above those 100 miles of municipal roadways, we have 100 miles of streetlights. God bless you. Those streetlights cost the township $650,000 every year to light those streetlights. Snow removal significantly increased over the last couple of years. Not that we've had the massive storms, but we've had a lot more frequency. So our snow cost her up this year nearly $1 million. Gasoline, I told you earlier, we have police and fire working every minute of every day. They burn gasoline. And especially in the town with topography that we have, they burn a lot of gasoline. Almost a little over $400,000 a year in gasoline. Fire hydrants, used to be a pet peeve of mine as a council. I got elected to council, realized we had to pay for our fire hydrants? $650,000. And quite honestly, that's come down. It used to be closer to $800,000 just for the fire hydrants. 207 municipal vehicles and the crossing guards. Very often, people believe that crossing guards are part of the school system. They're actually part of the police department, little over half a million dollars a year. So these little incidental costs, just five items, are more than $3 million of our operating budget, items that most people take for granted and don't even think about as they go about their day. Again, quantity versus quality. Twice-weekly garbage pickup, unlimited bulk pickup, weekly. Full-time senior citizen coordinator and another full-time assistant, an activities coordinator. Curbside co-mingling. We're going to talk a little bit more about garbage, but that was something we believed was very important when we did the garbage specs. Because of all that's going on in the world, we were told by the companies, by our own environmental consultant with the township, that we should go back to source separated. It would have lowered the bids. We felt that that simply would have reduced the people recycling and would have variably increased our tipping fees and made it more expensive to dump. So we kept the co-mingling recycling. That's one of the reasons the garbage contract went as high as it did. And we're now up to six free jitney shuttle routes. Those jitneys, as you know, we've bought jitneys in the past. They serve as our senior citizen buses during the day. But we have six routes in the morning and in the evening to provide our commuters. So as council knows, just as a reminder to the public, we don't tax every nickel of the budget. These items, a little bit lighter. You see, that's what we actually tax. And the darker green number is the total budget. So we actually generate revenue outside of taxes for the sake of providing services. But as you see, these last couple of years, these numbers have both escalated. We're talking a little bit more about that as we continue through the presentation. This is a line graph of simply showing the two. So we did, if you look in these areas here, we were pretty stable. We were pretty stable in these years, these last couple of years. Items have spiked, and we're going to show you why in a few moments. But for those handful of years right in here, after about nine years of continued growth, we stabilized, relatively speaking, for about seven or eight years, dealing with some issues, now the last three, and coming to a head in this year. So the bonded debt. Yes, our capital budget, our bonded debt has increased over the years from 14 to 18. But let's talk about what that means. We have more debt. But it's important to talk about what does that debt provide? We've paved 26 miles of those 100 miles of roads in the last eight years. We've added two new fire trucks. And though council members might know, some of the public might not know, one of those fire engines costs $1.2 million. Fire trucks are a lot of money. Paving miles of roads. I don't know, I don't think the exact number, but we're, you know, it's $30 million of roadways to pave that much. So roadways cost a lot of money. We paved a quarter of our town. And I can tell you to a lot of residents, we're not paving fast enough. Can tell you in eight years on this job, it's the one request we get more than any other. Pave my street. So we can't ignore the 100 miles of infrastructure we have to take care of simply because we don't want to add debt. We have an obligation to provide the infrastructure support to the community. We've refurbished multiple ambulances. We're going to do another one this year. Cheaper than buying new ones, but that's been a major investment we've made. Major improvements to the pool. Pool is a beautiful pool. We're breaking records already on membership. It's an important amenity to the community. We've invested significant money in the last few years. A new skate park, the Valley Police Substation, the Gregory School Bus Lane, the Kelly School Kiss and Go Lane. We created Ridgeway Park. Purchased Public Works vehicles. Well, I talked earlier about snow plowing and the wear and tear that the topography our town gives on our vehicles. We've had to purchase a lot of Public Works vehicles to keep up with that demand. Police cameras, both in the car and on our police officers. Four new shuttle jitney buses. Again, those buses are used multiple times a day, but we've invested in new buses. We added a jitney route. Made improvements to our parks. Almost every year, we're making improvements to the 100 acres of land that we own. Pump station improvements. Again, a lot of people take for granted that when you flush the toilet, you take a shower, you run the dishes, it's all going to go away. That water has to be pumped. We have four pump stations in town. They work 24 hours a day, every minute of every day, and very often require significant investment to keep them operating. Main Street redevelopment. So some of that increase in capital debt is the investment the township has made as part of the Main Street redevelopment project. New track and field at our high school, improved township website. Drainage repairs, again, because of the topography, old storm sewer systems. We've made major investments over the last eight years in various neighborhoods that were having significant drainage issues. That costs money. Improvements and repairs to public buildings, the library, fire department, a number of those buildings, the library facade. Again, it's nice to say we shouldn't bond money, but no one knew the library facade was going to fall apart one day. It fell apart, we had to repair it. That's money that's been part of the capital budget. So yes, and the council's going to talk in more detail over the next couple of weeks about our debt service. We've increased our debt service. But I would argue that these items are necessities for local government in keeping a community livable and in serving the residents that count on us. So let's talk about the number of full-time employees. If you look back to 1990, we had a peak in the late 90s and the early 2000s, as high as 375 total employees. We are down to 308, relatively stable since 2011 or so. Haven't changed the number of employees. We are looking for three additional employees this year, but we'll talk about that a little bit more in a bit. So relatively stable employee base. But yet, look at the personnel costs, which means salaries, pension, and benefits. They've skyrocketed in that same period of time where we've only added three employees, total personnel costs. From 2014 to 2019, we've added three employees, and yet our personnel costs have increased almost $9 million. That's an average annual employee cost of just under $150,000 in 214 to over $175,000 in 219. That's an 18.5% increase in average employee personnel costs, and yet we've only added three employees. That's part of the struggle we're dealing with here in West Orange and unfortunately across the state. So let's look at number of employees by department. In the police department, again, a high of 122. In 2006, 119. We've reduced that workforce. We are looking to council to add to employees of the police department. We'll get to that in a little bit. Fire department was reduced to 78. You see, it was increased to 88, and that stayed stable. That was a result of a grant we got to hire 10 new firemen. We took advantage of that in 2012. That's the reason for the increase on the fire department, but still overall less than it was at the height in 2006. Look at Public Works. So I understand people want to complain about government and excess of government. Look what's happened to Public Works since the 90s. And yet we have more developments, more roads, more parkland. That's a challenge to govern. And yet, again, with these reductions, we're still seeing huge increases in our personnel costs. This, obviously, as we know, a lot has been subsidized with privatization. But more than anything, it's asking what everyone in America is often asked to do, to do more with less. And certainly, that's been evident with the Public Works Department. Non-uniformed employees, again, down from a high of the 2006 area when the employee number was at its maximum. So from 2006 to 2019, we have 67 fewer employees. And yet taxes have continued to go up. Average salaries, benefit, and pension costs, that would equate to an additional $11.4 million in our budget if we still maintain the employee level that we had from 2006. That's an unfunded liability of about $2.5 million, meaning the unfunded liabilities we have in future benefit costs and pension costs and a lot of the liabilities we have as part of our contract in employees. So we struggle with taxes. We're going to continue to talk about that in these next few minutes. But we're 67 less employees and still struggling with the economic challenges of increased personnel costs. What are challenges meeting us every day? Every obligation we have in our budget, some of the primary ones, again, we don't think a lot about, but government mandates, employee contractual obligations, substantial decreases in revenue, which we'll talk about in a minute. Yearly appropriation increases, again, electricity, garbage, all those things we might take for granted. Just like in our own homes, our electric bill goes up, our cable bill goes up, our telephone bill goes up. All those things go up. The township has the same obligation to pay those services. And again, the challenge of maintaining affordable and high-quality surfaces and balancing the affordability versus the high quality. What are some government mandates? Just because we're government, we still have to pay federal social security and social security taxes for our employees. We have state pension payments. We're going to look a little bit at pension and the challenges that creates. State library funding. Although everyone loves the library, it's mandated in New Jersey that they're funded at a certain level. It's the only department we have that has mandated funding levels. Police, fire, recreation, health department, Public Works, all the other departments are discretionary funding levels. Library, it's an important asset, but it's a mandatory, a mandated funding formula that we have. And other operational requirements that the government might mandate. It's not a big one, but just as an example, I like to tell people, everyone thinks it's important to have security in our court system. So good idea. So the state mandated it several years ago. That becomes an obligation, a cost obligation the town had to incur because the state said you should have security in your court system. No one would disagree that it's not a great idea, but it's another mandate and a cost the government requires of us. The state mandated it, but the state didn't pay it. Employee contractual obligations for both active and retiree medical benefit payments. We're going to look at that in a little bit. Contracts include clothing allowances, paid off, vacation, paid time off, vacation, sick, holiday, personal days, comp time, retiree accrued time payouts, which we'll talk about in a bit. All contractual obligations we have to honor with our employees. Let's look at our pension costs. Look at how they skyrocketed from 2003 to a high in 2011. That's from $1 million to $8 million. The only way for us to make that up is unfortunately with taxation. It did dip a little bit here. Unfortunately, now, as we can see in a lot of our other expenses, we're looking at a four-year steady increase of these obligations we have, and they have to be addressed. These are obligations we have to pay the pension system. For the public who doesn't maybe quite understand that, the pension system in New Jersey is run and administered by the state. They simply send us the bill for what they calculate we owe them, and we have to send them a check. We do not control the pension system. The only town in the state of New Jersey that has their own pension system is the city of Jersey City. And quite honestly, it would be unaffordable and foolish for a town, West Orange size, to operate our own pension system to match the pension obligations we have anyway. But we have no control over that. When the state sends us a bill, we have to pay it. We got lucky for these couple of years, they sent us lower bills. Last handful of years, those bills are steadily increasing, and we have no reason to think in the short term it's not going to continue to. Here's the big challenge. Three different colors, if you can see them. And the steady increase, again, over these last four years of medical insurance. Employee contributions represent the dark green. It's as a result of what's called Chapter 78, a state law that required public employees to contribute to their health care based on percentage of the cost of the benefit based on a tier that is structured on the salary level. Those contributions have increased mainly because the overall cost of health insurance has increased. Additionally, when the law was first instituted, it was based on four steps. So it was a four-year buildup to the maximum percentage under the law. So some of this buildup in here was as employees were going through those four steps to get to the maximum step. The last handful of years increases is because the cost of the insurance itself has increased. No different than every private employer, every public entity across the nation. You don't have to turn on the news for very long to see articles about or news about the health insurance. It's an issue that the country's dealing with, but it's an obligation we have both contractually and morally to provide health insurance for our employees. The big challenge here, and we'll talk about this later on, is the retiree cost. So active employee health insurance, relatively stable. Employee contributions, increasing a little bit, but relatively stable. Look at the difference in retiree health care in the last four years. Huge increases, bringing our total health care costs to over $14 million on an annual basis. We have, as I mentioned earlier, 308 employees. We have roughly 600, John can correct me if I'm wrong, roughly 600 retirees on the plan. We have more retirees on the plan than we do active employees. Obviously, the costs reflect that. And as we can also all understand, generally speaking, health care costs get more expensive as you get older. We're paying for that now. The uncompensated liability, the accrued time that we talked about, the township has an obligation to pay. It is down to $8 million. What does this mean, though? This means that if someone were to retire and have unused sick time, they have a right to get that back in paid time, actual cash. If they have unused vacation time, they have a right to get that back in cash. We have an obligation to pay that. Some years, it's a big number. The council will tell you some years we have to fund $400,000 to pay for the unaccrued, for the accrued time liability that the employees have a right under the contract to get. It's down to $8 million. As a reference here, it's down 14% over the last five years. Couple of reasons for that. First of all, the credit to Jack Sayers, our BA, and John Gross, our CFO, and the time management system that was put in place with the support of the council. We're monitoring it better. We've also paved it down at higher rates. So we're doing a good job with that. But what this means to the public, okay, you don't understand, if every employee comes in tomorrow and says, "I'm retiring," we have to come up with $8.4 million. It's an obligation we have to fund. We only hope that people retire slowly, and we can fund it as we go. But if they all decide to retire tomorrow, we would owe out $8.4 million based on today's unused time. So that's a very real number, not unique to West Orange. It's unique perhaps to New Jersey. But it's an obligation, a contractual obligation we have to fund our employees based on contracts as well as state law. This simply breaks down where the bigger numbers are, and that's pretty much proportionate to salary levels. Personnel cost breakdown, what does these numbers mean? Obviously, the biggest numbers is salary and overtime. This little portion here is employer taxes. Again, just because we're a government agency doesn't mean we don't have to pay employer taxes. Doesn't mean we don't have workers' comp costs. We have to pay the same obligations that private employers would pay across the country. Health insurance benefits. Again, look at the size of the retiree benefits compared to the whole number. Retiree benefits have now surpassed pension costs. That's a very real obligation. And when we get to the total proposed budget for 2019, you're going to see that that number itself is 10% of the operating budget, is simply to pay retiree health care costs, 10% of the operating budget. And here's a perfect example of the challenges we're facing in the last 17 years. In 2002, health care, pension costs, accrued time, salary wages, represented, actually, benefits and pension and pension represented fourteen percent of the total costs of our budget. It's up to twenty-eight percent. It's doubled. And if you look here at how the salary pie from fifty-two percent to thirty-eight percent, it's getting, it's getting cut in half. That's why it's been a challenge to give the raises to employees that perhaps we'd all like to give. Who wouldn't be? But the struggle and the stresses of healthcare and pension costs squeezing this pie are squeezing the amount we have available for salaries, both for raises for employees and the ability to hire more employees. Who wouldn't wanna hire a bunch of more employees? We'd all would. More people for rec, more people for seniors, more police officers. We'd all love to. But it's downward stress of the benefits and pension costs making, giving us a lot less money to pay people. So from fourteen percent of the budget in two thousand and two, it's now twenty-eight percent of the budget. Just benefits and pension costs, almost a third of the whole budget. Uncollected taxes and tax appeals, very often misunderstood in the state of New Jersey. In the state of New Jersey, the municipality collects the taxes. They simply then distribute it to the school board. They distribute it to the county. On a good year, we're collecting between ninety-eight and ninety-nine percent of our taxes. That extra percent and percent and a half, the township has to absorb the full amount. The school board always gets a hundred percent of what they budget, and that the county superintendent approves. The county always gets a hundred percent of what they budget. The township has to budget for that uncollected tax revenue. And in two thousand and nineteen, we're budgeting almost three million dollars just to cover the uncollected taxes that people won't pay. Even though we only utilize twenty percent of the tax dollars, we have to fund a hundred percent of the lost tax appeals. In two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, we have funded over twelve million dollars in lost tax appeals. So for example, if someone, both a commercial property owner or a residential property owner files a tax appeal and they are successful, we don't get that money back from the school board to give to them. We don't get the money back from the county. The township has to fund a hundred percent of the lost tax appeals. The county and the school board are always made whole. That's an obligation we have in the budgeting process. So the annual challenges. The cost of core expenses simply increased faster than recurring revenues. Other than taxation, we have very few recurring revenues. There's an ongoing imbalance between those recurring revenues and recurring expenses. Contractual obligations for future expenses, most of them remain, as we talked about, unfunded. And there's a small and large expense reliance on taxation and reduction in state aid, which we'll talk about in a minute. So, uh, all those things that make it difficult to budget each year to govern are working against us in unison. Uh, let's look at revenues. Miscellaneous revenues, I showed earlier that the full budget is not completely funded by taxation. We'll talk about the breakdown in a little bit. It's funded by permits, fees, grants, uh, interest payments, fines. You see the large spike here and then relatively stable since then. That was from the adjustment with the sewer bill. Again, we decided to switch to more carefully calculate what the costs of, or the sewer and sewer system in our township, and we shifted it to the sewer fee. Again, we charge separately for the sewer fee because if it's kept in taxes, like a lot of town keeps the sew- the sewer fees in the taxation, you then cannot collect the sewer fee from the nonprofits. If you break that down, the township collects about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sewer fees from various nonprofits in town that we would not collect if we collect this, kept the sewer fee in the tax bill. So it's worth the expense of township to mail out separately because we can collect it from the nonprofits who don't pay taxes. State aid. Here's a big obligation, always a big discussion. The township, uh, school board, the school community has benefited the last couple of years from getting an increase in school funding. Not so lucky for the township. We are down two million dollars in state aid since two thousand and six. Hasn't changed since two thousand and ten. From two thousand and six, it was a steady decrease, and it hasn't changed in two thousand, since two thousand and ten. So, two million dollar reduction in state aid, while all the other state obligations we were talking about have steadily increased. We've had to manage with that reduction in state aid, and quite honestly, no real chance of getting additional state aid. So how else can townships raise revenue? Other than fees, permitting fees, there's not a lot of other ways to raise revenue. We do have a hotel tax here in West Orange benefiting from what seems to be a good, uh, area for hotels. The state allowed municipalities several years ago to implement a hotel tax. We are now collecting a little over five hundred thousand dollars a year from a hotel tax. We bill for EMT services for transport, as we're all well aware of. That collection is now up to one point two million, a little bit over than that on an annual basis. We still own cell towers in town. We collect rental fees from that at one, uh, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the recycling center, uh, although it's only eighty-six thousand dollars, uh, from experience here and how the town has dealt with that in the past, it would cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to run that recycling center, to adhere to state law. We privatized it, and, uh, more importantly than even the eighty-six thousand dollars, we get rid of our sixteen thousand cubic yards of leaves that are generated every year and the amount of sticks and branches that we deal with in snows, in storms. So we turned it into a slight revenue source, uh, but much more economical, even if it was, quite honestly, even if it was zero to have someone else deal with. So not a lot of ways to raise revenue. These are a couple, uh, that we count on each year to raise additional revenue. So strategy to close the New Jersey tax gap. How do you deal with that? You can simply continue to negotiate union concessions. It's still difficult to hold back the tide of personnel costs, as we saw earlier. Continue to privatize services. We have done that effectively in many areas, sometimes out of need and sometimes just to be more economical. Uh, reduction of workforce, we've done that. We can continue to reduce the workforce through attrition or layoffs. Uh, we can make that choice. But you see, even with a reduced workforce, the personnel costs have still, still skyrocketed. Create additional revenue sources. I'll be honest with you, I'm doing government a long time. I don't know of many other revenue sources government can produce, especially in New Jersey, where, uh, in some states, towns will get percentages of lottery sales that are sold in their, in their township. Uh, other states find other creative ways for municipalities to get a piece of those revenues. In New Jersey, the state keeps all the revenue and simply distributes how they see fit. Unfortunately, uh, they haven't seen fit to increase our state aid, uh, in about, uh, twelve years. We can reduce services. We can always evaluate what is essential, what's nonessential services, and we can reduce them. Or what's, what's more often the result in New Jersey to make up for these funding, uh, funding gaps is to raise taxes. There's not many other ways to raise revenue if primarily your source of revenue is taxation, which we'll talk about in a minute. So what are the annual budget objectives? It's obviously always to stabilize municipal taxes, but to provide the quality services to the community that the community counts on. And to ensure that those services remain affordable. Obviously, affordability is a subjective term, but we have to always balance what the community needs with, uh, with our ability to fund it. So let's talk about meeting budget objectives. Nine years in a row, we've delivered a zero to a two percent municipal budget increase. Nine years in a row, one year with a decrease of two point five, and three years with a zero percent. We've reduced, we talked about this earlier, we've reduced the workforce. The primary cost driver is obviously personnel and personnel-related costs. We reduced the workforce fifteen percent since two thousand and ten, nineteen percent since two thousand and six. We've reduced employee salaries and wage line items, uh, that are lower today. They're at two thousand and nine levels mainly because of the reduction in wages. But also, we've negotiated, we've collectively bargained fairly with our unions to negotiate zero percent increase, uh, in six of the last ten contracts with a public safety collective bargaining uni- uh, uh, union, not matched by any municipality in the state. So our unions deserve credit too. They recognize the stress that the township is under, and they've negotiated to take zero percentage increases in six of the last ten years. They, we've negotiated the elimination of health benefits for retirement for all but two of the seven collective bargaining units, again, the unions. Uh, we talked earlier about the increase in the retiree costs and the pressure ten percent of our budget just to cover retiree benefits. So I understand it's a difficult issue to talk about, um, but it only impacts future hires. And I personally believe, besides the cost benefits to the township, uh, long before twenty-five years, uh, I believe the nation's gonna have a universal healthcare. So I don't believe the pressure and the stress on future retirees to have that township benefit is gonna be the stress it is today because long before twenty-five years, uh, that these future hires will then be retiring will be the, the safety net of a universal healthcare in America. I believe that. Um, and I, that was part of our negotiating strategy, uh, but also, as I showed earlier, uh, the simply crushing obligation we have to fund these retiree benefits. Again, now at ten percent of our operating budget just for retirement benefits alone. So, now let's look at two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, the appropriation increases, contractual salary and wage increases. Keep in mind, it's two point four million, and that's with some of the unions taking zeros. As the council knows, our contracts have step, guaranteed step increases every year. So even if all the unions agree to take a zero percentage increase, the contracts have step increases. So a lot of that two point four million is step increases. Employees based on contract and the salary guide goes through those steps over four or five years where they get a bump every year based on that guide. So even if there's no percentage increase on top of that, we have a huge salary and wage obligation every year. This year it's a two point four with most of the unions agreeing to zero percent increase. We're still at two point four million dollar increase in the salary and wage line item. Pension costs, I mentioned earlier, a huge cost that's going up almost a million dollars this year. Health benefits, a million dollar increase this year. The garbage and recycling collection, one point two million dollar increase. We knew going in, told you earlier, the contractors, the companies we spoke to, our own experts, our own paid experts, our own salaried experts, all told us that the contract was gonna go crazy unless you changed the way we recycle because, again, you don't have to watch the news long to hear what's going on with China, that the markets for recycling had dried up. And the administration made a decision saying that it's better to keep it co-mingled, curbside recycling because if we ask the public to go back to separating it, we might have decreased the amount of recycling. They would have kept it in the garbage, and we simply would have paid more for tipping fees because for those in the public who don't know, we pay to get rid of garbage based on weight. So the whole idea with encouraging recycling going back fifteen years ago was to get that out of the waste stream, lower our tipping fees. We were eventually able to go co-mingled and our recycling spiked. Um, unfortunately, the worldwide market for that bottomed out, and almost nine hundred thousand of that one point two million dollar increase is because of the recycling. That was a decision the administration made, uh, to balance what ultimately would have probably led to higher tipping fees. That's a huge obligation we have this year that we have to deal with. Joint sewer. Mentioned earlier, under those hundred miles of municipal roads, we have a hundred miles of sewer systems. All that has to go somewhere. We have pump stations to pump it. It goes down to Elizabeth. Again, that's a fee we simply have to pay. We are part of the joint meeting of Morris, of Union and Essex County. Uh, they simply, they're a utility. They simply manage the costs. Hopefully, they keep it as low as possible. When they increase costs, they simply send us the bill. We have no, no ability to negotiate that fee. They send us the bill, we pay for it, and this year it went up three hundred thousand dollars. Salt and snow removal, I mentioned earlier. Significant increase over the last couple of years, not in the magnitude of the snowstorms, but simply the, the volume of snowstorms, the number of snowstorms. Utility costs, just like residents have utility increases in homeowners, as homeowners, we have to pay utilities too. They're up a couple hundred thousand this year. And other miscellaneous expenses, we can talk a little bit more later on and when you get into the budget hearing. So six point nine million dollars in increased costs. This is not adding a bunch of employees. This is not doing anything fancy. This is obligations we have in governing this community based on the employees we have, the services we have. We're at six point nine million dollar increase without much flexibility. Can't not plow the snow. Can't not get rid of the sewer waste. Can't not pay the electric bill and not light our streets. So these are obligations we have, uh, to, to serve this community. As I mentioned earlier, it's always a balance act, but ultimately we have an obligation to serve the nearly fifty thousand people and to service the hundred miles of roads that get those people around. So let's look at the budget increase history and where we're getting to at two thousand and nineteen. I mentioned earlier, we've had three zeros in the last couple of years. We had a negative, and every year we stayed under two percent. This year, that's all coming to a head. We've been able to put off obligations as long as we could, balance some things each year that kept us uh, in a, in a better position than we are now with a six point nine million dollar increase in costs that are not negotiable. Uh, we, we're looking at an eight point five percent tax increase, uh, this year, uh, and that's our ten-year history. Even as I mentioned earlier, even with that eight point five percentage proposed budget, we are still the second lowest town in Essex County since two thousand and eight in terms of the municipal increases. And we're gonna look a little bit more of that later on. So where do my taxes go? We collect over two hundred and thirty-three million dollars each year for the Board of Education at sixty-one percent, the county at thirteen percent, we're at twenty-six percent, and that up there is the open space tax. So, uh, that's the breakdown of money. Twenty-six percent of the tax dollar, uh, is, is the township. What's the municipal budget look like? Again, what's the biggest number? No surprise, it's total personnel cost. That's what most of our services are provided by people, by actual human beings providing the services. So personnel costs, both salary, pension, and benefits are always gonna be the largest item. It is, again, the fixed cost I talked about earlier. Those fixed costs are increasing out of our control. We do get, uh, some grant money that's in there, and then miscellaneous expenses, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So the total budget proposed for the council's consideration is just under eighty-six million dollars. This, look at this a little bit quick here. We'll look at it again a little bit later on. But, uh, fire operations is the biggest chunk in the budget. Again, I mentioned earlier, some towns don't have paid fire department. We have a paid fire department. That's the biggest single line item in our operating budget is the fire department. Police patrol comes second. You might think police would be lower, uh, but the police are broken down into several divisions. Criminal investigations, uh, other divisions down here, the police CSU. So when just looking at patrol, where fire operations are looked at in the total, the fire operations remains the largest single item. Patrol is second. Then you get that service and all these other charges here that we'll look at a little bit more closely a little bit later on. This simply represents what is the other. Down here, the other at thirteen, uh, at eighteen percent, where's my, eighteen percent other. This chart simply represents what is that other. It's municipal court, deferred charges, code enforcement, all those variety of things. There are legal services, animal control, housing assistance. All those other items are bent, built up in total, eighteen percent of the operating budget. So where's our revenues coming from? Eighty-five million dollar budget. I told you it's not all taxation, but taxes do represent seventy-one percent of that. Again, we don't get a lot of other, a lot of money. We do get state aid, only five percent. The four point six million dollars is actual state aid. Again, decreased two million since two thousand and six, has not increased yet that. We do have delinquent taxes. So I mentioned earlier, we don't collect a hundred percent of the taxes, never have. I don't think a municipality in the state of New Jersey does. But we always do generate revenue. In two thousand and nineteen, we'll collect delinquent taxes from eighteen or seventeen. So that is a revenue source every year, uh, but we're always, uh, behind that. So it is a revenue source. Uh, if we ever got to a hundred percent, it would be better, uh, but not, uh, not realistic. Um, so that's a breakdown of the revenue sources. Again, the taxation, uh, we're asking the taxes be funded at sixty point eight million dollars, not the entire eighty-five. So let's talk a little bit about the tax levy cap in New Jersey. Sometimes very complicating for people to understand. Uh, they read two percent tax increase. How can taxes go up higher than two percent? Couple reasons for that. First of all, there are exceptions. We just spoke earlier in this presentation how pension, health benefits, and debt service are the biggest drivers of the budget. So what the state did is they made them exceptions. So if you get huge increases in your pension costs and your benefit costs, you can legally in New Jersey raise taxes ten percent, and you can still be within the letter of the law on the two percent cap. You can still be fully compliant if the reason you're exceeding two percent is because of pension, health benefits, debt service, or capital improvement. It's important to recognize, since the cap was imposed, this is the first year we're asking the council could to consider going in excess of the two percent. Still within the legal cap limit, and we'll talk about that in a minute, again, maybe because some of the exceptions. But we've always not only honored the spirit of the two percent, or the letter of the two percent tax cap, we've always honored the spirit. Even with the increases in pension and benefit costs we've incurred over the last nine years, we've always kept the budget under two percent regardless of what the exceptions that were provided to us and allowed to us under law. So this is the first year, and we know it's a big ask, um, that we're asking the council to consider a budget that's in excess of the two percent, but within the letter of the law. So, if we wanted to say, "We don't care about that. We don't care that we're, this is a legal budget." We wanna get to two percent. The administration did some calculations. How do we get to a two percent budget? How do we get eight point five percent down to two percent? It's simple. You have to get rid of seventy part-time positions and fifty-five full-time positions. We'd have to get rid of all those employees just to get to two percent. What does that mean? This is just an example. This is not a proposal. We just want people to picture and formulate what it means to get to two percent. What it would mean for this community to get to two percent. It would mean eliminating eight police officers. It would eliminate seven firefighters, eight laborers, six dispatchers, five drivers, two inspectors, nineteen administrative personnel, and every one of the part-time positions and all our crossing guards. That's what's on the table. So when people talk about, "Let's cut taxes, let's cut taxes," to get to two percent, that's what we'd have to eliminate. That would leave us with only eighty-seven police officers, eighty-one firefighters, only three laborers, two dispatchers to work twenty-four hours a day in the dispatch center, twenty-two drivers, twelve inspectors, and only forty-five, forty-seven administrative personnel, and no part-time positions. So that's what's at the council's consideration. If the council wants to get to two percent, we're looking at the loss of a hundred and thirty positions, uh, in the township. And then we have to question what services can we continue to provide the community with that loss of personnel. So what are our options? Not a lot. It's real easy to post on Facebook and talk out in the community about what government should be doing. Uh, what are our options? There are not a lot. One option we've worked on is if we say, "You know what? We can defer some of these costs and quite honestly, get a little bit creative with the financing. We can stay at two percent for two thousand and nineteen." But those obligations only magnets, magnify. So what we're proposing at eight point five in two thousand and nineteen by two thousand and twenty would be twelve percent. And most likely, twenty-one and twenty-two would be even worse. So that's possible, but what does that mean to get there? Not only get creative with some of the financing, be no capital budget. No added positions, no filling open positions, no expansion of services. In fact, yes, a reduction in major services, but that can get us to two percent if we say, "You know what? Let's pay the piper next year." We're gonna pay more, but we can do that if we decide to. The problem with that is, that leaves us in a position where the next year, you really have to make the cuts. Because one of the provisions of the New Jersey tax law, the two percent tax law, says that you can bank some of your cap. Because we've never exceeded the cap, we've been under it some years, the town says you can bank some of that. You can save that cushion for a rainy day. And ladies and gentlemen, this is a rainy day. We can raise taxes, the eight point five percent we're suggesting to the council, and still be within the tax gap because we have cap bank. The problem is, it expires this year. That cap bank goes away. So if the council decides, "You know what? We wanna go two percent this year. We'll deal with it next year." Then next year, we have the obligation to stay at two percent. Even though that eight and a half percent's gonna come to twelve, so next year, the obligation, the only obligation we would have to get to that number would be to eliminate significant jobs. So, uh, we have cap bank under the law. Uh, we can use it this year. We're recommending we use it this year. Um, and we think that's the best thing to do. And so what is Plan B? Plan B is yes, raise taxes eight point five percent this year. We're gonna ask the council to consider that. That gets us to two percent next year. By dealing with some of these hard obligations this year, making these very difficult decisions, that puts us in a position to stay at two percent next year. Again, not only within the letter of the law, basing exceptions, we think it gets us to two percent based on the spirit of the law, not utilizing exceptions of two percent and still meeting our obligation. 2% based on the spirit of the law, not utilizing exceptions of 2% and still meeting our obligations, both contractual and obligations that we can anticipate such as benefits, pension and other operating costs. So what does Plan B mean? What is in this budget that the council's going to consider over these next couple of weeks? We're recommending that we add a full-time planner and economic development consultant. Now, if the council decides to fund that position, we can work collectively with the council to describe and identify what those specifics, what the criteria of that position is, we're recommending that we do that. We're recommending we add two new police officers to the table of organization. Not only fill open positions, but add two additional police officers. We're going to add $50,000 to the library funding above the statutory limits. Because the assessed value in town has increased, the library is getting additional funding this year anyway, we're asking the council to give them an additional $50,000 on top of that. Senior citizen bus expansion, not as big an expansion as we'd like to consider, but what is currently a senior citizen bus that's only part-time, we're going to make that full-time. So that gives us another half a day to provide on top of the other four positions we have, providing transportation options for our seniors. We are going to fill five open firefighter positions. Plan A, that original plan, if we decided to go 2% this year, we would have eliminated those positions. Not only would we not fill them, we would have eliminated them from the table of organization completely. We're going to fill them, we recommend filling them. We're going to add a part-time senior livability coordinator, that's through a grant. Expanding senior services program which we'll talk about. Justice and mental health collaboration program training. We're going to expand traffic safety enforcement. New dedicated public or safety cellular network to ensure communication in emergencies. That sounds like a real government thing, but the reality is, we're having significant problems with our radios and our ability for our emergency personnel to communicate. There's always problems in town anyway. The two mountains of West Orange, the topography sometimes makes it very difficult to communicate via radios anyway. We're looking to spend money to make sure that our police and fire can always communicate with each other and address the emergencies. We are adding GPS technology on the school buses. It's a partnership we're doing with the school board, though maybe not something we ever would have thought about until that November 15th snowstorm when they simply could not find out where the buses are. We worked with Acting Superintendent Ms. Mendez over the next week. We met with her staff and our staff and says, "You know what? It would be a public safety benefit if every school bus had GPS technology on it." So we are partnering with the schools to put GPS on all the school buses. We are adding a tree climber position, though a lot of the tree work in town is, is privatized. We have a tree division, we have a lot of trees. We have, again, those 100 miles of roadways are lined with 100 miles of trees. So we're adding a skilled tree climber position for the council's consideration. We think it is important in servicing the community. There is an $8 million budget, capital budget in this budget for the council's consideration. Improvement to township parks, $6 million of that is road resurfacing. I mentioned earlier, 100 miles of roads. We've repaved about a quarter of that. Still have a lot of roads to repave and, and request every year, almost every day to get roads resurfaced. It's an expensive proposition. We think it's an important proposition to serve the community and we're recommending the council consider that as part of this budget. Township pool improvements, we made a bunch over the last couple of years. We recommend doing some more. The new, the new entrance to the pool just opened this past weekend. Looks beautiful. If you haven't had an opportunity, check it out. It's a great improvement to the pool. We're asking for the council to consider state-of-the-art firearms for the police department. You know, it's not like we buy guns once and they're the same guns they use forever. Those guns have to be updated. Bulletproof vests get updated every year. It's expensive to properly man our police department. We're asking the council to consider that. Expand sustainable New Jersey climate change efforts, new police vehicles, refurbish one of the ambulances. I mentioned earlier, we've invested a lot of money in refurbishing ambulances over the last couple of years. We're going to do that again. Continue firehouse renovations, a new sound system for OSPAC. Council chamber sound system improvements for the hearing impaired. We're going to ask the council to consider that. Some Luna stage support, like, just like we provide some minimal support for the PAL and Mountain Top and Community House and a number of other organizations in town that provide services to the community. We're going to add Luna stage to that support list. They are wonderful amenity to have in the community, very important to the future of the valley and we're going to throw them some support and have them work directly with some of the residents in the community. And we're going to add additional high-visibility LED street signs. Mentioned it before, the solar-powered signs, they should be hitting the street pretty soon. We think they're going to be a great addition in sections of town where people drive too fast, blinking to remind you to slow down, as well as much more visible stop signs in some of the difficult intersections. We've budgeted money for the pass in that and we're going to ask the council to consider that as well. So in addition to asking to cover the significant obligations that are out of our control, this budget does include some other things that we believe are important to continue servicing the community, the council to consider. So, at least we believe we are improving some of the services we provide, not only just raising taxes just to cover our obligations. So what is some of those costs? We looked at earlier, the breakdown, the wheel of what the percentage of costs is. What does it actually mean in actual dollars? I mentioned fire operations is the single largest expense the township has and residents pay a little bit over $50 a month to cover, to cover fire operations. Again, that's a $50 a month obligation that neighboring towns without paid fire departments would, would have to pay. Police patrol, about $40 a month. Municipal debt service, a little over 20. I mentioned garbage. Garbage is always one of the largest items behind employee personnel costs this year. It's a little under $20 a month. Again, I would argue municipal services are a bargain. For the $20 a month, anything you put at the curb, they take. In fact, they'll take it every week. So I think that's a, that's a bargain that we get as residents, maybe been a little bit unfortunately spoiled with that. These are all the other breakdown of what these services mean. The library, less than $10 a month. Police traffic, just about $5 a month. Recreation, as great as our recreation department is, it's only costing residents about $4 a month to cover these services. What's the total of these services? Even with what is an 8.5% recommended tax increase, it still comes out to $297.50 a month for the average taxpayer to cover municipal services. Less than $300 a month to cover their services. So just look at what some of these other, on these next pages are. What are some of these other items? Shade tree division I talked about, it's less than, less than $3.50 a month to cover the shade tree division. Planning department, less than $2 a month. Some of the administrative functions, animal control, an important part of the town, less than a dollar a month residents pay for some of these services. So you get a great amount of services in this community and it really equals only a couple of dollars all collective, even with the proposed increase. We're $297.57 a month on average, the average taxpayer to get a lot of services. That still equates to $300 a month and even with the proposed increase, largely in part because of very modest increases over the previous nine years, we are still at 300 a month or less. And that's not just a handful. Everyone says when you say average, well, yeah, but I pay more than that. It's, that represents 68% of the households. Almost 70% of the households in this town will fall under $300 a month or less for municipal services. Municipal services that cover 100 acres of land, 100 miles of roads, a variety of services and 24 hours a day, every day, every minute of every day of every year, we are providing service to the community. If you look at what we're paying in other items, car payments are more than $300 a month. Lord knows if you have kids like I do, your cellphone bills are more than $300 a month. Internet services is not cheap. Utilities we pay for houses, how much we pay to go out, cable TV. I understand no one likes to pay taxes. It's the great American pastime to complain about paying taxes. But if you look at what we're doing in West Orange for the 47,000 and above residents that live here, I would argue they get a lot of bang for their buck and it still amounts to that very less than $300, probably way less than most of us are paying for a lot of other things in our lives. So where do we fit? When you look at these other increases, again, 2% tax cap, but when you factor in all those exceptions. So normally, most people would think you can only raise taxes 2% in New Jersey. That means over 10 years, no one should exceed 20%. The fact is with those exceptions, it's not true. Newark, for example, an 80% increase. That's a lot. Cedar Grove, big increase. I mentioned Fairfield earlier, even though they had the largest percentage of tax reliance on commercial properties, they're even raising taxes way in excess of West Orange. So 16% over a 10-year period for West Orange. I mentioned earlier, Coldwell surpassed us this year from the number one spot, but on average, the Essex County towns have raised municipal taxes more than 30% in a 10-year period and West Orange is at 16%. So I know no one likes to pay taxes, really easy to complain about taxes, but we think we've done a good job of providing these services at a much more economical pace than some of these neighboring communities. So here, let's just talk about hypothetical. You know, a lot of people ask me all the time, Jack and I were at a community meeting just recently and everyone said, "Cut my taxes, cut my taxes. How can you cut my taxes? Love to cut my taxes." But just look at some of the hypothetical. If we said we want to cut property taxes 5%, let's agree as elected official, we're going to cut property taxes 5%. When you look at $11,000 as the annual property taxes in West Orange, we would have to reduce spending by $11.5 million. That's twice the budget increase we're talking about this year. That means you'd have to eliminate 150 municipal employees of the 308 we have just to reduce someone's property taxes $550. Now, we'd never be cavalier with people's money. Money's money and $550 could go a long way for residents. But at what cost? What services would be left? We'd be, we'd be almost down to nothing to providing no services to the community just for the $550 annually. So it's real nice to talk about cutting taxes, but when you look at the numbers and the obligations we have, both in the structure of how New Jersey is set up for municipalities, the obligations we have contractually and the services we've been used to providing our residents, it comes at a real cost. And I tell people all the time, if we cut taxes, don't you think we would? You think I want to stand up here and recommend an 8.5% tax increase? You think I like paying taxes? None of us like paying taxes. But we have to make a decision as a community, what services can we live without? What services are important to the community? What services help to sell the community? Commuter shuttle, great pool, great fields, all those things sell the community. What are we prepared to do without? So I mentioned earlier, you can always redefine essential services. I would call a commuter jitney shuttle an essential service. Maybe someone doesn't think that way. So the council, it's up to the council to say, "What do we define as essential services?" Our recreation essential services? Could Mountain Top and Recreation be asked on a volunteer basis to provide recreation for 7,000 kids? I would say not, but that's up to the council and collectively as a community for us to define what is essential services. How can we continue to evaluate the most efficient and cost-effective ways to deliver essential services? I would say we found very creative ways. We continue to get rid of people's leaves, the 16,000 cubic yards of leaves, our town trees by privatizing the recycling center. That was a creative way to address a problem that was costing the township hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in the 90s. So we're always looking for creative ways to provide those services. Privatization, utilization of part-time employees. We've eliminated a lot of positions and in many cases, those positions have been filled either with part-time employees or additional privatization efforts. Always looking to do that. And redevelopment, new developments. You know, for years, bless you, everyone talks about the New Jersey ratable chase as being a curse. It's like they say in business, if you're not growing, you're dying. We, we see the obligations we have and that those costs are going to increase every year, whether you add employees or not. If you're not increasing your tax base, you're eventually going to, you're going to die. So redevelopment brings in additional revenue. New developments, we don't have a lot of room for new developments in town, but trying to find creative ways to redevelop. The council is being asked to consider a redevelopment effort tonight. If we can't find ways to redevelop old properties that aren't producing, aren't viable, aren't attractive and any other reasons that they want to be redeveloped, more importantly, not producing the tax revenue they can, if we don't find ways to do that, you see the tide and the way it's going of these obligations we have and obligations that are not going away. If we don't find ways to grow as a community, we're eventually going to die. And just to end, just as a reminder, it's still a great little amenity the community offers, the property tax rebate card. It's free. If you shop locally, use the participating businesses, you get money off on your taxes. It's a real easy way to support local businesses and, and get some money off on your taxes. So I end tonight with that little commercial for the property tax rebate card. I thank you for your time and for being patient and we'll look forward to working with the council and the community over these next several weeks and months in, in what is without question the most difficult budget we've presented to the council, not only in my nine years as mayor, but certainly in my years on council prior to that. Councilwoman.
Mayor, are we going to have our traditional budget hearing with the directors coming on the Saturday?
Yes, so Mr. Gross, our CFO, is going to provide members of council with the official budget document that, that you know and additional some data that backs up some of the things we talked about. And then it's up to the council president and council members to, elected day that works for them and the administration will be there with all the directors and department heads to review the budget on line-by-line item and all those items, although that is our recommendation and summarizes our recommendation. Ultimately, as you know, it's up to the council's line-by-line review and approval of that budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll take any questions, council? You're good? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just wait for the township clerk to come back. Thank you to the mayor and the administration for the budget presentation and we look forward to getting our detailed budget sheets. So we'll be able to read, you know, go through our budget meetings and analyze and make our, make our decisions and hope also for the community to see the detail for the budget. So we thank the mayor and the administration for that. I'll just wait. So also, I just want to take this point of time right now that I would like to ask for a moment of silence for a woman who served the township of West Orange as the municipal clerk, who was one of my first, gave me my first experience since municipal government and explained government. And that is the recent passing of Marie Stauffer, who was municipal town clerk. And I just ask my council members and members present at chamber to bow our heads for a Thank you, my colleagues. Thank you, members of the council and to our public.
Yes, so ask for a moment of silence for Susan Borg.
Yes, and that was, that was why I was, okay. Also, and, and thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Another moment of silence is requested for another good and dedicated township employee who recently passed away after a courageous battle with cancer over many years, and that is Susan Borg, our former township planner. So I ask for another moment of silence. Thank you, Councilwoman, for reminding me. I apologize for that. Okay, now we'll open up to public comment. Anybody from the general public wishing to speak can come forward, just raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Susan Borg here.
Yeah. Do you want me to turn it?
Sure.
Thanks. Good evening. Michaela Bennett, Old Indian Road. I'm here to speak about, I don't have a copy of the agenda, so I don't know what item number it is, but I'm here to speak about the potential OSPAC board that you've been asked by the administration to consider an ordinance regarding. I know I said after the last meeting that you should all make yourself familiar with the deed regarding OSPAC because I find it to be, unless there's something superseding the deed and the developers' agreement, I don't think that West Orange enjoys the right to OSPAC. I think I've told you that previously. I'll read a section of it. I've already forwarded it to council's email, but the section that I think is most important says, "This is a specific purpose deed wherein the grantor grants to the grantee the property described herein in accordance with the purposes and subject to the restrictions set forth in the developers' agreement by and between the grantor and grantee dated November 25th, 1997 and recorded in Book 5510, page 72. In the Essex County Register's office, only and for no other purposes, the parties herein acknowledge that this is a limited grant. In the event the property is not used by the grantee for the purposes or in accordance with the restrictions as set forth in the developers' agreement, the property will automatically revert back to the grantors herein. This covenant shall run with the land and shall be binding upon grantee's successors and/or assigns." Now I have a copy of the developers' agreement and what I think is important, and I'll make sure that I get this over to all of you, but I'm, I'm fairly certain Mr. Trank has a copy of this and can make it available to all of you. You'll also find, so I'll read it to you exactly as it's stated in the developer's agreement. There shall be rules and regulations promulgated for the use of the playhouse that's, you'll hear later that that's OSPEC, which shall be set forth as follows. A, the playhouse shall be for use only from April fifteenth to October fifteenth. B, the times of use shall be limited from six P.M. to ten P.M. daily in reasonable afternoon hours on the weekend. C, use of the playhouse shall be controlled by the Township of West Orange Recreation Department. D is about the sound system. E is that it should be limited to those types of events which will have little impact upon the surrounding residential neighborhoods. F says it shall be known as the Oscar Schindler Center for the Performing Arts. And G says the developer shall have the right of reversion to it in the event that the township seeks to abandon the playhouse in its use. If it's supposed to automatically revert, if not being used, as it's, as the rules describe in the developer's agreement, unless there's some superseding document, I think you've lost the right to control OSPEC as a result of it being used for profit, it being used for weddings, it being used for purposes other than what was described, and it being used by other organizations other than the recreation department. I don't know who decided that it was appropriate to do licensing agreements, and, you know, obviously, you'll need to seek counsel and discuss that with them, but I think it's very important to point out to you and to the public that you're spending an awful lot of time divesting and providing authority to licensees on land that I think you've lost control over many, many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Please state your name and your address. Thank you, sure.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lloyd Cass. I live at one thirty-five Forest Hill Road. This is very brief, just in, with respect to the budget presentation tonight. I was asked by Councilwoman Latu Brown, just to remind folks that we have a fully, a full complement of members this year of the Citizens Budget Committee. I was appointed by the councilwoman, and there's, I guess, five other ones. So, just as we, as we go through the process of reviewing the budget, I guess in the next month, just remember we're around, and look forward to participating. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Paglisi.
Hi, Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFenzenzo. I usually get up here and I talk about some upcoming events, but today I want to backpedal a little bit. May was older, or May still is, Older Americans Month, and during the month, we've held several events to recognize seniors and their contributions, and there have been a couple of West Orange residents who have been part of our parade of honorees. So, at our senior legacy writing contest, which is where we ask seniors to share stories about their past and events and people who have shaped their lives, Vincent Dahman wrote, excuse me, "The Myth of Invincibility," and he received an honorable mention award. And then earlier this year, we had our legends, similar to legacy legends. These are people, seniors, who have impacted the community throughout their lives and even in their older years are still making a difference. We recognize Stephanie Gerstein, who's a volunteer with Listen to Children, the Friend Advocate Program, Reading Buddies, Interfaith Hospitality Network, and Succeed Together. Very active woman. I know she puts me to shame. So, I just wanted to highlight those two honorees who were among our events this past month. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, you're forgetting, Mr. Paglisi, that also June first is the open house.
Well, I said I didn't want to focus on events, and by the time this airs at TV, it will be past, but June first is our annual open house event. We do recognize that it'll be a little bit of a traffic impact along Northfield and Cherry Lane. We are putting it on our social media posts, and it'll be on our website, the traffic impact aspect beginning tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but just, you know, it has been a concern, because I know with the nice weather, traffic has been a big issue over there. Is Mr. Sarris, are we having any conversation? I mean, that Saturday is a pretty big day. Are we having any joint conversations in regards to staffing of county police officers and our officers in the area?
Sheriff's Department is in touch with West Orange Police. They enjoy a good working relationship, and they are working on a, working on a plan.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Paglisi. No further members of the audience wish to be heard? I'll close public comment. Oh, wait. Oh, I'm sorry, Tammy, let's see here.
I'm sorry, no more public service announcement. I just have to remind council that June seventh is senior line dancing, and you all are invited to the Rent a House, six o'clock next Friday, Dancing with the Seniors. Please come and join us.
Thank you.
That's the HRC monthly event for our seniors.
Thank you.
I hope you're doing the electric slide.
I've been talking to a lot of them. They're all getting their workouts now. They love it. Thank you, Tammy. Okay, make sure there's nobody else. I'll look around the whole room. Thank you. I open the, I close public comment, and I open the comments to my council colleague, Councilwoman Castellino.
Sure. I'll start off with, yeah, thank you, Tammy, for what you've been doing with our seniors, and also for the poignant presentation that you had earlier this evening. I know into a few of the meetings, and it's quite a topic, and I know very, very dear and dear to your heart as well, so I thank you for taking that on. I also just want to remind parents, we talk about the school system. Any issue, any issue at all, seek out to your principal. Kristen Gaudry is our director of special services and of the nursing department. They do a tremendous job when any information is brought to them in advocating for our children, so please also, I know in the meetings we discuss RJW Barnabas Health, St. Barnabas up in Livingston, has a behavioral wellness department that is very instrumental and needs, so any, utilize local services and any question ever, never, never hesitate. And, you know, as months will come forward, getting just awareness out, you know, hopefully will, will make a big difference. Mr. Trank, in regards to the developer's agreement, council president, could, I want to have other comments, but can we have legal, you know, make a statement on the reading of that and the interpretation of our agreement and?
Well, the specific statement is that there is never, ever been an instance where any other developer or any of those communities have ever suggested that there is anything improper that or that causes that reversionary provision to be involved. Bottom line is, the township is operated within its scope. It is that, that provision designed so that there not be a competing, not be, we were dedicated and given that hand, as many, I'm sure, as Councilwoman McCartney, who are all others, so that property is given to West Orange as part of this surrounding development point, I think is what it's called. So, the bottom line is, it's used for public purposes, and the fact that we caused it to be licensed has never been an issue. The developers are still prominent in town and still in law, and there has never been an issue raised by anyone as to any reversionary provision. Never gotten a letter, never gotten a phone call, never gotten a comment, certainly not been voted votes. And the township law department's position is that the township activities that have been done in that side, including the licensing and everything else, is within the ambit of that grant to the town.
And part of oversight in regards to a resolution that, you know, will be forthcoming is oversight, which is a good thing. So, I appreciate future conversations that we will have and, and not that, you know, we learn, we learn by past mistakes if, and Mr. Trank, I appreciate you clarifying that, so we'll, I'm just not going to comment anymore on that subject, and we will just have to wait to see. Also, Mr. Gross, in regards to the budget advisory committee?
Cass.
No, well, no, I'm asking Mr. Gross. In regards to the budget, Mr. Cass, thank you for coming up, but Mr. Gross, my question is, are the emails going out to the committee? I see a few members here tonight, but not, Anthony, not, not all of the committee members. So, are the emails going to the committee members, and they knew about tonight?
We will be distributing the budget to the council before the, by, before the end of the week, Friday or shortly thereafter, for your review, and we will notify, the mayor has asked me to notify the chair of the advisory committee, budget advisory committee, and provide copies as well for them.
Okay, but also, weren't they supposed to meet with you as well, with them at some point in time, or was that?
I've not been asked to do that. Well, I'm happy to meet with, you know, they, they really didn't have, and I'm not surprised.
No, no, up until this point, yeah.
Because they have, they don't have anything to meet with until it's distributed. Obviously, it's going to go up to the council first, and I would expect a request to meet, and we'll make those arrangements.
Okay, but in the future, anytime we have any budget hearings, if just make, if they could make sure of the calendar of when we have the hearings, so they know to come in and they have the information. Great. Okay, thank you. Also, let's see, Ms. Bennett, Tammy. Anthony, thank, thank you for what you've been doing for seniors in our community. Congratulations to our seniors for being recognized. I have to thank Ms. Laura Van Dyke and Oelia Perez, our new coordinators in that, our senior department. They had their first big event last Wednesday, or last Thursday, at Mayfair Farms, our salute to seniors, and they did a tremendous job, about a hundred participants. They look forward to making creative programming this coming year, and they've just been very active, just so I let my colleagues know, they've been very active. They've been going to all the senior organizations. They'll be going to the Hispanic Foundation as well to introduce themselves, and I was able to make the event last Thursday, and just great positive feedback. They had index cards that they put on the tables, and they, they got some input back from our residents of some new ideas of programming that our residents would like to see. So, it's, it's great to see them taking off so well. I was great to see our retiree, Estrella, who was our former coordinator, and so was glad to see her on the other side of the event, being able to enjoy herself in her retirement at one of our activities. So, it was great to see her out at, at the event. So, we're looking for more exciting things there. I was glad to see the mayor's presentation, the expanding, expansion of the senior programming. I know we are going to be putting in the full-time driver, if that all works out with our budget conversations, and I look forward to more events coming up for them. We also, at the event, working out if they need transportation to the farmer's market as well. So, anyone in need of that, please make sure you call our senior services at nine seven three, three two five, four one zero five. And before I wrap up with the comments, I just, because we didn't get to do our council liaison and our announcement, just real quick, I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't commend the administration and all our public works, police and fire departments on a beautiful Memorial Day celebration this past Monday morning. Just want to be thankful to all our, our veterans out there in our service men. Also, pride of our community is our mountaineer squadron and our youth going to our, going to services. This, this week, we have our first female West Orange graduate from the U.S. Air Force Academy, Gina Marie Aravbeto, and she had went through the Mountaineer Academy, the Mountaineer, the Mountaineer Program for a junior ROTC program. So, just seeing Gina Marie and the other graduates already, it's four years since they graduated the high school, and this year alone, the program has produced four seniors who will be attending West Point, U.S. Military Academy next, this coming fall. Out of thirteen thousand high school students, twelve hundred are selected for West Point, and four are from West Orange High School this year. So, congratulations to Colin Morgan, Wes Rineo Wins, Andrew Amaya, and Vanessa Letman on their hard work and their commitment, and to our majors, Mark Encini and Thurston up at the high school. They do a tremendous job with our youth and really just great strides that we're making with the junior ROTC program, and just seeing them with our veterans on Memorial Day was very emotional, and we congratulate all for their service. And we also had four high school students that are going to go right into service as well, so we wish them all lots of luck, health, and safety. And that is all my notes for tonight. Just to come up to this year, Fourth of July, Third Annual Food Truck Festival. So, if you're around on the Fourth of July, not only be around for the fireworks, but we're also going to have the Third Annual Food Truck Festival at West Orange High School in between the baseball and soccer field, so we look forward to that this Fourth of July. Thank you, council president. That's everything.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Latu Brown.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by thanking Ms. Williams for that presentation. I'm going to be very honest, I was very taken aback. I've known Zach for a long time, and the power and strength and the courage that his mother had to come here and give face to the heartache, you know, and to you and your family as well. I had not known your personal story. Thank you for the courage of sharing that, and I think it's something very positive that you have undertaken, and the high school has joined in, and so many other community members. It's very important, so I just, a heartfelt thank you for that powerful presentation. I look forward to joining and participating in, you know, making sure that there is conversations that are happening about that. Thank you. Mr. Paglisi, thank you for all the work that you do with our seniors and the county does with our seniors. It's always very exciting that they stay involved and, more importantly, also are recognized for all of their efforts. Lisa, Lisa spoke earlier for the library. I'm very happy and excited to follow the process. I'm happy that you had a successful fundraiser as well, so I just wanted to say thank you for coming out and sharing the events that are happening, and go West Orange Public Library for beating Google this time around. That's very exciting. Lloyd, Mr. Cass, I just want to thank you for coming out tonight, and also Anthony Kameya, two of our members of the advisory board. I am very happy to see you both. I am relieved that the process that we'll be going through will be shared with our residents and have a voice at the table. Lloyd, I may embarrass you a little bit, but there's history that Lloyd has had in municipal budgeting with New York State before, both the city and the state, so I'm happy that you're on board, and thank you both for your time, and to the rest of the committee members for giving of your time to challenge, to, to work on something that is very challenging for all of us. And to the administration, I know we've harassed incessantly. Thank you for, for the work that clearly you've put into that, and I look forward to, okay, I'm not really looking forward to that. I'm not. But I appreciate the.
It's a long day.
I appreciate the opportunity that I have been given by, by our residents to participate in the process. It is an incredibly, incredibly daunting challenge, and I'm happy to work on that with Ms. Bennett, I just wanted to clarify with respect to the ordinance that's on, on for tonight, that was an administrative direction. It was something that I asked the council to consider, because while I understand there have been challenges at OSPEC, I really do want to make sure that OSPEC is successful for all of us, and pitching in and with oversight and. It is an incredibly, incredibly daunting challenge, and I'm happy to work on that with everyone. Ms. Bennett, I just wanted to clarify with respect to the ordinance that's on, on for tonight, that was an administrative direction. It was something that I asked the council to consider, because while I understand there have been challenges at OSPAC, I really do want to make sure that OSPAC is successful for all of us. And pitching in and with oversight and elbow grease, I think, is the right direction for us to go in. With respect to your comments, I'm, I'm going to defer to legal. I do understand that there were rules and regulations that were adopted sometime before the revised addition that I'm looking at, September 4, 2012. So, those, that, with respect to the loss of rights, we have a legal department, have to rely on, on what they, they advise as well. But as far as the ordinance is concerned, it's really to make sure that the community has some performances and some shows that brings and builds community at OSPAC. It's a wonderful space to be in. Michelle Castle, Councilwoman Castellino, and I met with Camille yesterday. We took a tour of OSPAC, just offering our support to make sure that they get off on the, on the right foot and that they have a successful year, because we all benefit from that. But I appreciate your advocacy and your voice, as always. Thank you. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I want to thank you also for putting the National Gun Violence Proclamation on our agenda. We spoke to Claire, it was just a year ago that we did that. And we also had a resolution I have here from May 8, 2018, with the Assembly and Senate looking at resolutions in support of legislation for gun control. So, I wanted to ask Claire, while she was here, if there were any other model resolutions that we can, I'm glad we have the email exchanges. I can reach out to her and see if there are any other updates that we can add. Lisa Fahory, thank you for the library update. And I was really, piqued my curiosity about the reference questions and how many have come in. Because if there is something relatable to the township specifically, what the reference questions are about, you know, know that we're here to help answer any of those questions, or there specifically for looking up material at the library, but if there's anything that we can help, you know, we would like to support. I'd like to see those reference questions. Tammy, thank you for the presentation. I'm looking through my folder here, and our first meeting was only last month, March 9, oh, two months, March 9, two months ago. And in a very short amount of time, I think what we discovered is that the topic is right at the surface. And I feel what the coalition, coalition is doing and what's needed is bringing it above the surface. And I have to say, I believe in fate, because as you know, right after that meeting, I did have tickets for Luna Stage, and who do I meet? My neighbor, who also suffered. And I was very surprised to see her at Luna Stage, and I invited her to the next meeting. And I think it was a relief for her as well. Glad that she's coming to our meetings. This material is out there, I guess, the point of the coalition, a lot of that came out in the presentation. The point of the, there's so much material out there, and we want to consolidate and make it available. My colleagues write about the school systems, meeting all of their mandates, and teaching, and the police department, some of the stories that we've heard at the meetings as first responders. So, I, I look forward to work this. When I say a fate too, because that was on a Saturday morning that we first met, and here we meet Marcia Esken. And then, the following Saturday is the art exhibit. And when that spoke to me, you know, when art speaks a thousand words, that's, it just all came together. So, I think as we move along, this, this will all coalesce. So, thank you. And thanks for the line dancing also. I was sorry to say, Anthony, I want to thank Anthony for recognizing the seniors, and I didn't know it was older American month. But that, I was unfortunately not able to go to the salutes of seniors, and I like the index cards on the table concept also, because I think they do want to change it up. And between the line dancing and the electric slide, or a few years back, they were doing square dancing. I think, you know, maybe there's just could be a different kind of a venue that, that can be created. So, thanks for being creative about that. And I appreciate Michelle's comments about the Memorial Day ceremony. I don't know if it was the weather or what, but it just seemed very touching. I wanted to thank Sherry Quirk for just paying attention to every single detail, Department of Public Works for setting it all up, and also to Joe Fagan, who, Joe just comes up with all of those historical details that just, just make it so, such a wonderful tribute. So, thank you, Joe. Michaela, the provisions on the deed restrictions, I guess the way I see that, I really am going to leave that to the depart, to the legal department to compare and contrast your comments. But if your comments are saying that the deed restriction is left for the township to operate, just like we saw in that budget presentation, there are a lot of services that the township has that we prioritize. And in this case, I believe that the township is responsible, and we're taking the stance of prioritizing this to operate. Lloyd, thanks for the reminder. I think everybody's on top of that. Thank you for being here. I'm sure this presentation and the budget will all be made public. You'll all have a copy of it. Anthony, thank you also for being here. I was, you know, what's interesting about that budget presentation, to hear the mayor said that it was nine years, I was thinking, you know, during my, my tenure of seven years, we had a 0% increase. And we debate that, because, you know, it sounds great to say we have a 0% increase on the municipal side of our budget, but it catches up. And it's a debate that we have all the time about, you know, balancing this out. So, it's all coming to fruition. We have a lot of work to do. Not good news. So, we look forward to working with you and hearing any comments that you might have. And let's see, what else? Yes, for the council liaison, what did I want to say? I have to thank so many department heads. I keep talking about the sustainable jersey recertification, John Gross. Not just John, but Sherry, Department of Public Works. So, when I talk about this, right, we have all of these topics, but look how many things are under each topic, and we have to rec, get recertified, this is due next Monday. To get recertified, we have to put supporting documentation on each one of these categories. So, I am obsessed and preoccupied working on this in every spare minute, and you know, I don't have too many spare minutes, so it's an awful lot of work. But I do want to thank the department heads for pitching, and, and our municipal clerk for digging stuff up for me, so I appreciate that. It's a lot more work to go. And I, and thank my council president for putting the last-minute pledges and plans on our agenda. The planning board met last night here. We approved minutes of a special meeting on the executive drive application, and we had a very nice executive summary presented by our planner on the reexamination report, going over the summaries of all the stakeholders and chairpersons, community leaders that Mr. Greigle has already met with, and created a summary to explain the purpose and scope of the update of our master plan. So, we have, we're going to work, continue to work over the summer, meet again for a public meeting in September, and hopefully pull this all together by the end of the year. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council. I'm going to take my turn. I'm going to take my turn now. Okay. I just want to thank the organization to wear orange. Make sure all new residents wear orange on June 7. Remember, it's a national tragedy with gun violence, especially for our students, especially for anyone. But please go out there and make the effort. Let people be aware that you care, and, and do your part that needs to be done. Also, thank you, Tammy, for your great presentation. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of your organization. It's something that's very important to all of us, you and I, you know. And it takes a lot, and you've given a lot, and thank you, and Zach's mom, and we thank her too. And we look forward to the run, and we look for you present at the street fair. Speaking about the street fair, remember, this Saturday is our West Orange Annual Street Fair, and also Edison Day. The Edison Museum mission is free, so please take the opportunity to go visit the Edison site, learn a little bit more about our, one of our famous residents, ask questions, and get to meet a great staff out on the, the Friends of the Tom Citizen, and who sit on the board. And so, we look forward to you coming out. Also, big congratulations to Stacy and her husband for reactivating a great farmer's market. The pickles are great. My wife spending $50 a shot on pickles, so, every week. So, it's a real great thing, and we're really proud of both of them. We thanked them for reactivating the farmer's market. We look forward to you to coming on June 1 for our street fair. We have over 110 vendors, which is, I think, a record, right, Ms. Brown? Okay. So, please come and see. There'll be great food and great merchant vendors out there. Come share today, meet new people, come talk. There'll be great activities for kids, but also, and also admission to the Edison site. I also want to throw out a big thank you to the West Orange High School ROTC program, because a lot of the events that we do throughout the township, particularly in the Downtown West Orange Alliance, couldn't be done without the help of these students, who really give 190% to the programs that we do at the Downtown Alliance, especially helping out at Breakfast with Santa, helping out during the course of the holiday open house. So, we really couldn't be more grateful to what they do for us. And also, we're going to be saying goodbye to one of our favorite people. I'm sorry, is Ernest? Will be moving to Arizona. We're going to do something, hopefully, at next council meeting before he leaves, but we've known Ernest for a long time, and he's always been there at the Downtown Alliance activities, and so, we're going to miss him. And so, we're going to, hopefully, the next council meeting, we will do a presentation to him, to thank him, and to remind him he does have a family here in, in West Orange. Also, congratulations to the pedestrian safety committee and the Safe Roots to School. We were just awarded at West Orange, I said we get the gold, and this year, we got the gold award for our Safe Streets, the Safe Roots to School program. I'm very proud of the people involved, involved in it, Mike Damamiller, Lori Caffner, the members of the board, Roz Moskowitz, and the people from Easy Ride who work with us, Helen Florries from the Livingston Y, who works with a lot of our programs. So, West Orange this year, and I'm played again, we said we're going to get the gold, and we finally got the gold this year for our Safe Roots to School. Also, on the agenda tonight is the first part of an ordinance that we've been working on to eliminate two parking spaces in front of the Burger King on Pleasant Valley Way to make it a safer egress and entrance to that area. So, we'll be first reading tonight, second reading next meeting, and hopefully, the county will support in enforcing it. And we look forward to that, and that'll be a great asset to the additional safety improvements that we're doing, of course, with the mayor said in the budget presentation. We have signs that'll be going up, LED stop signs and LED crossing signs for make our routes a little bit safer. Also, want to thank Mr. Fahory for coming and telling us about the great things at the library. We have a fantastic library. And to the members of the Budget Advisory, we look forward to your input. Hope you get, you get your, you know, into the budget, and, you know, really put your hats on and think about things we can do to make things more, work better and more profitable, you know, to make things really be better. And, let's see. And Joe Fagan, I got to thank you and the administration, and also the ROTC again, for a great Memorial Day service. Your, your presentation about one of West Orange's sons who didn't return, but you brought back the sands from Normandy Beach and spreading them out on the steps of town hall, so he did return. And we thank you for that. It was a very moving ceremony. And thank you for everybody for being there, particularly our veterans of armed wars, and my council colleagues and the administration for their participation. And, and that's about it. Thank you. Councilwoman Kobyak.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Cass for coming up and reminding everyone about the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee. I also see Mr. Campania out there. If there's any other members of the, the committee that are here that I'm not acknowledging, I apologize in advance. But as you can tell from the mayor's budget presentation, we really need your input, your view of the budget, and your suggestions on what we might consider to make this a more efficient budget. Mr. Gross, I, I hope, I hope you're going to include the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee in the distribution of the documents, so that they can get on it just as soon as possible.
I think I, I thought I mentioned that.
Yeah.
Great, great. And could you, are you also planning to put the, the mayor's presentation and the budget documents up on the town website as soon as we can? Okay, great. Thank you. I, I wondered if I could, as long as I'm giving you a laundry list, I wondered if you could, on this, this two-year Plan B slide that, that the mayor had, most of the, most of these initiatives did not come with a price tag. And I wonder if, at some point, you could provide a price tag for all of those, so we could get a better idea of how this might be impacting.
It will all be in the budget.
Okay. And also, if you could, there was a lot of discussion about the jitney. I know you periodically do estimates as to the costs of the jitney and also the ridership numbers. If you could do that again when you get a chance and provide that to the council, that would be great. Same way with the, with the sewer tax, there was some discussion there too, so would appreciate that. I want to say thank you to Ms. Bennett for raising this issue. It's, it's kind of ironic, back in 2017, I actually asked the planning department to provide some of the OSPAC-related documents, including the developers' agreement, the planning board resolution, and the council ordinance that created this. It's, actually sent it to everybody in 2017, and I need to send it to you to make sure Councilwoman Matute Brown also has it.
Thank you.
But, and I wanted to follow up with Mr. Tranca on, on Councilwoman Castellino's question, because obviously, the, the, the OSPAC facility is a, is a huge asset for the township, and something that we, we don't want to jeopardize at all. And for me, I think you make a very good point, Mr. Tranca, that nobody has asked for the property to revert back. But it seems to me, another part of that equation is that, is whether we are, whether we are in compliance, not so much that, that someone has asked us to, the developer has asked us to revert it back to him, but whether he possibly could. And so, I wanted to just get a little bit better feel for, the actual documents seem to me to say that that's one of the rules that has to be followed, that the property, that the OSPAC has to be administered by the rec. department, and obviously, it hasn't been. But now, we seem to be stepping into yet another way in which it appears that we're not in compliance with the developer's agreement. So, I would just like to get a better feel for whether or not the developer has asked for the reversion, whether we're in, we're putting ourselves in the, in the, in the potential jeopardy that he could.
So, again, I assume you're not trying to act by publicly kind of suggesting that someone asked for it, to try to act in a way to hurt the township's interest. So, I can tell you without a doubt that the administration appreciates Councilwoman Matute Brown's proactive stance to work with us. The law department has reacted totally to her suggestions. The administration has endorsed them, and we'll get them back to the council as quickly as possible, so that they can be enacted. We are confident that the spirit, the intent, and the letter of the agreements are being complied with, and there's absolutely nothing that has been suggested that, there's anything that we are doing today, tomorrow, or ever, that will be contrary to that. So, again, we will continue to vigilantly, as we do every day, to vigilantly assist the township and its council, and department heads, and the administration in facilitating that. So, again, if you wish to discuss this in another format, I'm saying, but to suggest that in public, we should ask people or suggest that they do X, Y, or Z, we're telling you we're confident that we've done everything we can, and we'll continue to do it. So, again, if you have suggestions, I think, I think the, the mayor feels strongly that Councilwoman Matute Brown's suggestions are productive, and that by implementing those things as quickly as possible, we will continue to fulfill our future responsibilities to, to the town. We can, every day, do a better job, and that's what we're committed to do collectively. So, we're, we're confident where we're at, where we're going. And if you have productive. And if you have productive suggestions, fine, but to ask me to give you a legal opinion as to what, of what may or may not happen, we deal with the issues before us. And what we're dealing with is the suggestions that have been made by one of your colleagues and the facts, which is that the township continues to use this facility for the intended purpose reduced to benefit of the community, which I'm sure you share.
Well, I, I appreciate that answer as well.
Thank you.
And, um, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth and I don't want to summarize incorrectly, but when the developers' agreement says, as one of the rules is, use of the playhouse shall be controlled by the township of West Orange Recreation Department.
Right. The Recreation Department in this town is one of the finest departments in this township. The business administrator oversees that department. The business administrator has been proactive in the, the number of years it's existed. So, again, Mr. Keough, Mr. Serra's probably talking five times a day. So, again, we're moving forward. We're not, this is not a, uh, a circumstance, uh, where we're gonna secure, and the, the law department's not gonna go back and forth. If you want, uh, something else from me, pick up the phone, you have my cellphone, you call me 24/7, I'll meet with you anytime. And we, we wanna work on implementing to keep it what its intended purpose is, and that's what we're doing. And there is not a scintilla, and the particular developer who is involved in this is still involved in this town. And he has never, ever, in all the years, ever suggested anything that Ms. Bennett suggested or that you're alluding to. But that doesn't mean that we're not gonna be proactive and, and that's why we think that the positive aspects that exist, number one, with the provider, uh, that we now, uh, have who's willing to work, uh, with that and with some fine tuning. So, again, uh, we're, we're very comfortable with where we're at and I welcome, uh, any positive input from, from, uh, any member of, of the council or the public as to how to move forward, not how to, uh, you know, micromanage a document that no one ever has suggested, uh, that we are not complying with the spirit of it. So, again, I, I respect everybody's opinion. If your opinion is we haven't done well, I respect that opinion, but we're gonna do better tomorrow, the day after and whatnot. We do not have any issue on the table at all concerning reversion. I can promise you that and that, you know, again, that's where we're at.
Well, again, I appreciate your, your, uh, your response. Uh, since you raised the issue of a legal opinion, uh, I can't imagine that, that the rest of the council would be opposed to hearing the legal opinion on the sort of the issues.
Our legal opinion is we're complying with the letter and spirit of, of the agreements that all relate to OSPAC. That's the legal opinion of the law department, period.
Okay. So if I wanted to understand some of the things that I don't understand, I should just send you an email or give you a phone call?
No, just pick up the phone and call me.
Okay.
Pick up the phone.
Okay.
Cause whatever, send me an email, it'll be subject to Oprah and you might as well just pick up the phone. Or you can keep asking me like this if you want. I, I'm, I'm fine. I, I'm, I'm here for as long as you want. So, if you wanna ask questions, I'll, I'll make notes.
Okay.
You know, but I'm, I'm not gonna give you any further response other than we're comfortable and we're confident and we're continuing to comply with the letter and spirit of all agreements and that no one has suggested as a matter of law that we have not. Okay?
Well, if you could then, if you, if you could, uh, when you get a chance to address this issue where the developers' agreement says, use of the playhouse shall be controlled by the township of West Orange Recreation Department.
And that's the, the business administrator is a, is a department head that the Department of Recreation reports to. And again, it, it is, it is what it is, okay? We're not, this is not the Mueller investigation, we're not gonna have public hearing, we're gonna continue to comply with the letter and spirit, okay? Thank you, Councilman. Enjoy.
Okay. No, I just, I just would think if the agreement wanted to say the business administrator or the head of the Recreation Department, it would've said that, but it didn't say that. It said, "controlled by the township of West Orange Recreation Department," and clearly it hasn't been. That's, that's why the, my disconnect is.
I'm not prepared to say it has, right? So, all I'm prepared to say is we're meeting the letter and spirit of that, okay? I'm not the head of Department of Recreation and all I know is he works with the business administrator and the township is confident that we are meeting the letter and spirit of all agreements and that there is not one scintilla or iota of ever an inference that anybody's ever suggested a reversionary of that provision. And by the way, that's all the more reason we should move forward and we should implement what Councilwoman Matu Brown and some of your other colleagues have suggested so that we will have even more comprehensive and more proactive efforts under the, the leadership of the business administrator and the mayor and all of the departments in the town.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trank.
Thank you.
That's, that's all I had.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, that concludes our comments. Madam Clerk?
Review of the consent agenda. Public meeting and executive session, uh, I'm sorry, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting and executive session of May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Uh, resolution, planning board resolution nineteen dash oh three for the Essex Green Executive Drive redevelopment plan approved on May twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman Kukoviac? Yes, I'd like to pull Agenda Item D, Resolution One Forty-two dash nineteen. A resolution authorizing the retention of hired rule and associates to prepare a study to determine whether certain properties within blocks one sixteen and one sixteen oh one qualify for designation as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment. And then I also had a couple of, uh, a couple of questions, uh, as well. Would you like me to?
No, Congress, ask, ask the questions while council's here.
Uh, D, one forty-two nineteen.
I was, I had spoken to Ms. Faurie, who came and spoke at the conference agenda and asked her if she was going to be around, uh, by the time we got to the, her resolution, uh, because I just wanted the, uh, public to know because it concerns the library. This is Resolution One Forty-nine dash nineteen, it's Agenda Item K. It's a resolution, uh, authorizing the retention of an engineering firm and an architectural firm for further assessment of Ten Rooney Circle up at Executive Drive for the potential move of the library. And I just wanted to get a better feel for, uh, wha- what actually has to be looked at now relative to what has already been looked at and reported on. So, but I, I don't see Ms. Faurie.
I'll answer it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Trank.
The mayor and I met with the library board about ten days ago or two weeks ago. They have separate counsel, Mr. Serone, and the bottom line is Mr. Iovino. And again, just so it's clear, Mr. Iovino is a library architect. He's prepared reports, I know, Councilman Kukoviac several times, you'd said you hadn't gotten them, but I think you found them in your emails that they were sent from, uh, my colleagues, you actually have had them for several meetings. Uh, but net-net, um, the library, sorry, the library requested this further analysis by Mr. Iovino. And basically, all this, as I understand it, and again, this is their request and as you well know from reading the resolution, that they're gonna share some of the cost. Basically, this is gonna be a, uh, a, a more, a more structural evaluation of Ten Rooney to ensure that it can hold the weight of the books. That's as I understand it from a discussion with Mr. Serone and Mr. Iovino.
Okay. And, um, again, forgive my ignorance, and I know you do frequently, but, uh, it, that sounds like an engineering issue as opposed to an architectural issue, so why are we hiring an, an architectural firm?
Uh, because, uh, this is a recommendation of the library. I believe Mr. Iovino, from what I saw in some emails, um, he is basically going to have the engineer work under his, uh, scope. So, if you look at the proposal, again, it's Resolution One Forty-nine dash nineteen, um, they're basically going to sample the steel frame, that's what it says under structural assessment, to determine the mental, I'm sorry, mental, that would've been, the metal composition. And then this will confirm the floor loading capability and ensure us more confidently to plan the spaces. So, again, we really, as you've heard many times, uh, the mayor sees, uh, a potential with the site that's adjacent to where we are now, uh, to have an auxiliary library and some additional senior housing that's desperately needed. Having said that, uh, the mayor is not going to move forward and ask you to consider relocating the library unless the library board is on board, is literally comfortable on board. And so, uh, we've met with the library board, they've requested this, uh, Iovino is an architect, they identified, as you are well aware, cause you were at some of the hearings, uh, that are now subject to the fifth lawsuit by, uh, by one of our community members. Uh, the Iovino did an analysis of the existing library and identified, I think, a million four of improvements that are needed that goes back to 2015. You've allocated certain monies, including the emergent items because of the side almost crushed a person. So, that's occurred, but in order to make this evaluation as to whether the library can move and that the library board would be comfortable with that, further exploration, they request that this occur. They're splitting some of the cost. We're, we're asking you to advance between nine and thirteen thousand dollars for this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Trank. I, I just also had a question on Agenda Item C, which is Resolution One Forty-one dash nineteen. It's a resolution permitting the, uh, the rec department to display fireworks at the high school, and this is, of course, an annual event. I was just curious, cause, uh, the mayor also mentioned it in his presentation today. Uh, is, Mr. Gross, would you happen to know how much the, the cost of the fireworks, the Fourth of July fireworks program is?
I don't have, I don't have the exact figure tonight, um, but I, I'll have to get that for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
About fifteen thousand, fifteen, twenty.
No, I, ma'am, I mean, I just, I don't know there's all related costs to it, but I do know that the fireworks are something like twenty-seven thousand dollars just for the fireworks, but then there's also the police presidents and fire departments, so.
Yeah, I'm just not sure exactly what this contract was. We changed vendors this year, um, so I'll, I'll, I'll subvert to that.
Okay, yeah, just for the, for the vendor and also for the whole cost. I just can't remember. Thank you. That's, that's all I had, uh, other than the pulled, uh, resolution.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman, uh, McCartney, any questions?
Nothing to pull, but really just to thank you. There are, um, three resolutions that we have here that, uh, will support our sustainable jersey recertification. And I do want to thank the administration for Resolution One Thirty-nine dash nineteen. That's the resolution authorizing the township to extend the agreement with the, uh, residential energy aggregation. Um, we were not, we were, we met with other municipalities, we tried to do it all together, that just, timing didn't work out with the previous contract, uh, so I'm glad to see moving forward with the, um, uh, with this agreement with, um, Gable Associates because we did save two-point-five million, I think, over the twenty-one month contract when it was in effect.
And I think it's important for, for those that are maybe confused because we, we're in a contract and then we're out of contract for a while, these, these savings are cyclical. And so what happens is, is that, you can't really dovetail one contract into another because one of the reasons what happens is, is that, um, sometimes the PSC and G contracts are lower and some, than what's going on in the general population and vice versa. So, this, that's what, we're, we're in that cycle and now we're, it's time for us to look at going back into a, a private contract.
Right. There was a gap that we did not renew because of that, so this is good.
And we chose not to renew because we knew there was.
It wasn't a savings.
Right.
And the other two resolutions are, um, about, um, animal, animal control. Basically, these came out of the health department, um, so I just appreciate the, the effort there. And I will talk on the ordinance about the, uh, planning board resolution when we get to ordinances. And I actually want to thank, um, Councilwoman Matu Brown for taking the initiative to preserve, to propose the ordinance to create the, uh, the board because that was kind of like a sidebar conversation that we had, um, at the last council meeting and thankfully now it's materializing, so.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
I just had a, um, I have two questions, actually, one on One Thirty-nine, uh, which is the residential, yeah. One of the warehouse clauses talks about this being the third, is this the third or the second round?
Third. This will be our third round.
The third round. Initially, it was passed in nine, in twenty nineteen, twenty sixteen for three years, right? So, so it would expire.
That would be the second round.
Oh, that would be the second one. Okay, all right. That, I just need a clarification on that. Um, and then my other question is on, um, just to follow up to Councilman Kukoviac's, um, on One Forty-nine with respect to, um, the Iovino. So, they are asking for a cost between nine thousand to thirteen thousand. Um, and, Mr. Trank, you just said that they're asking for us to put that up in advance and then they would, are they contributing to this here, the nine thousand to three thousand?
If you look at the proposal, uh, from Mr. Iovino that's in next.
Yes.
It, it involves different services.
Yes.
So, um, we're not paying for the architectural services of seventy-five hundred dollars or the estimating services of thirty-five hundred. We're only paying for the last category called structural testing. Um, that's nine to thirteen thousand dollars. So, in, in the preamble, when I wrote it, I said, um, the libraries wanna pay for the additional architect services of setting up hundreds, and the estimating services of thirty-five hundred.
And just, and just to clarify, we never pay anything in advance.
Yeah, never.
I just thought, I heard you say that, but I could've just, I could've been mistaken.
I'm sorry, my, I, Ms. Gross is absolutely correct, we don't pay deposit or anything else.
Even if it says it, we don't.
Okay.
We get the letter ball and then, um, it comes on the bills.
So, that, that nine to, to thirteen thousand is strictly for the testing of, that's all we're paying for? So, any additional services that would be required, um, that are not included in that, that everything else is going to be the expense, at the expense of the library?
Clear.
Okay, all right. But I just need that clarified, thank you.
Councilman, uh, Castellino.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilwoman Matu Brown.
Thank you.
In regards to One Thirty-nine, just as we do with the other two, um, rounds, the public could opt out if they don't want to participate.
Yes.
Okay. I thought, so I just wanted to clarify that. And then how, once we, um, configure this, will, will it go out in, to, in the tax bill or?
Everything, everything will be just like we've done in the past. There's, there's, the, the Gable Associates are responsible for doing all the communication with residents.
Okay.
And, you know, they.
So they'll pay for the mailing then?
They take care of it.
Okay, good.
We have no upfront cost whatsoever.
Okay, good, cause the mailing is, is huge to mail townwide. And I think my other questions were answered, just, um, Councilwoman McCartney, thank you for taking the endeavor with a sustainable, uh, audit.
I'm delirious.
I know, it's a monumental task and, um, you're a better woman than I, cause it's, it's a lot of follow-up and a lot of due diligence and I really appreciate you taking that on.
Thank you.
All your hard work, so kudos that it pays off and I'll talk about the ordinance when we get there. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Uh, Councilman Kukoviac pulled Resolution One Forty-two dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the retention of higher rule and associates to prepare a study to determine whether certain properties within blocks one sixteen and one sixteen point oh one qualify for designation as a condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Carnaval. I just pulled this because, um, uh, the, the cost is twenty-six thousand dollars and I realize that if, that even though it is a professional services, uh, service and is not required to be competitively bid, uh, I still think when we're looking to spend twenty-six thousand dollars on one of these, uh, studies, when all of the other studies that have been done since I've been on the council have been, uh, small fractions of this price tag that I think we should bid it, so I didn't want to, uh, I didn't want to vote to approve this. And I asked my colleagues to support me on this, so I think we should go out and solicit a few bids and find out if we can get it for less than twenty-six thousand dollars.
I do have to, uh, just clarify your point. The redevelopment study we did with regard to Executive Drive, cause I know it was sent to me today, was thirty-four thousand dollars. So, again, um, it, it is less expensive than that.
Thank you, Mr. Trank.
I will stress that the importance of having this study done for the process, uh, its requirement for the process, as you all know, uh, is unnecessary and, uh, the, uh, this firm has obviously done the last few ones, uh, we, a decision or there was some, uh, position that Mr. Greidel, as a planner, should not do them, although legally he should. as a planner, should not do them, although legally he can do them, and no one's ever disputed that he can do them. That would be more economical, but I think people thought that independence was valuable. Again, we take our, we, from the Planning Board Chair and the Planning Board Attorney, and so we're trying to give them, they're here, and if they can. So yeah, I think that's why the sentence is to have the best report done as thoroughly as you can to see as possible.
There's a panic button, I'll notify you, just in case.
I'm sorry.
Panic button, just in case. I'm serious, I have a panic button.
Mr. Trank, if I could just clarify, I was referring to redevelopment studies. You, if I understood you correctly, you said that the redevelopment plan was thirty-four thousand dollars?
I meant to use the plan that's saying.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think this.
Do you think it was? I defer you.
Yeah, Mr. Greigle, Mr. Greigle did the study for Essex Green and Executive Drive, and it was significantly less.
I'm talking about the plan, so.
I'm not talking about the plan. I'm talking about redevelopment studies, because what we're talking about now is a study, not a plan.
Yeah, so, yeah. And again, the bottom line is, the experience in this town has been that the services that we'll have to reform, the cross-examination that will have to occur before the Planning Board, some members of this council, i.e. Councilman Krokoviac, has asked us to sometimes bring them to this meeting, and then, of course, we know there will be litigation. So therefore, we're going to continue to get the best professionals who can provide the most comprehensive report, comply with the statutes, and protect the decision you've determined to make. It's your decision, whether you go down or up is yours, but we want to make sure that after you have that input, you have the best input and that that decision is sustained if there is a challenge.
Just laughing. Jack?
Okay.
Everything's okay?
Yeah, he's all right. You call the best decision?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve 142-19?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on second and final reading, 2571-19, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Sections 25.3, 4, 5, 15, 20, and 25 of the revised general ordinances of the Township of West Orange Massage Businesses. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. At this time, I ask the general public, is anyone here wishing to be heard or ask questions on ordinance 2571-19? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open it to my council colleagues. Any questions on this ordinance?
No.
No?
Just a general question, Council President, from Madam Clerk. So when the state statute updates, we just get, that comes, oh, sorry, Mr. Gross.
No, it'd be the legal department.
Oh, legal.
Legal department.
So when this gets updated, it just goes straight to, to your, to your office, and then you bring it to us, or?
With regard, so as you know, if the state determines to pass a law or a regulating area, they preempt us.
Yeah, absolutely.
We had adopted a number of years ago, again, I always look to Councilwoman McCartney, because she probably has painful recollections. We spent a lot of time working on this. But subsequent to that, the state stepped in. So recently, then, when there was an issue with the Health Department, the, and I don't remember which business it was, to be honest with you. They called the state and said, "West Orange is trying to regulate us in an area where we have a state license." As a result of that, we did the research and determined that our legislation should be repealed, and that's, that's what we're doing here.
Got it.
We have to comply with it.
Okay.
And again, in a way, the Health Department obviously has many responsibilities.
Sure.
This is just one, and he's no longer on your there and pro.
Fortunate.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt 2571-19?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
2572-19, an ordinance authorizing the offer of private sale of the property at Block 175.08, Lot 7, on the Township of West Orange Tax Map to the adjacent property owners pursuant to local lands and building law. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Is anyone in the general public wishing to ask questions or make comments on ordinance 2572-19? Seeing none, I close public comment on this ordinance. I open the ordinance to my council colleagues. Any questions?
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President. I just, I did, I have some questions. I was curious as to how the, how the township came to acquire this property?
Malin Avenue.
I think it's properties.
Been there a long time.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's been there a long time, but.
It does. It's not new to our, it's not new to our records.
Often, we, you know, as you know, we get them as a result of tax for bug years, you know, so, but I don't know. We could, I'm sure Mr. Lepore would have the capability, and again, I'm not sure if this was one of your pre-questions, but in the future, if you wanted to know the history of it, we'll probably, but we can, it's obviously obtainable.
No, that's okay.
We can help him research.
It's in our conservation, it's in our conservation easement inventory. That's where it came from.
Okay.
And it's an undersized lot, and these property owners live next door to it.
So these two are, you're absolutely right.
Yes.
Yeah, these are, these will be an asset to the people adjacent. That's all we're doing here, because if it wasn't an undersized lot, then we would put it out to the public, and we'd have the public.
Right, so it, by being undersized, it's not developable, even if, even if somebody adjacent to it wanted to extend their own prop, their own improvements onto that property, could they do that?
Oh, I'm not saying that. They could, they could.
They can, they can go to the Planning Board and ask that the property be merged, the properties be merged, into a single lot, and then that would, and that would be a good thing, because, for instance, if that, if you had two non-conforming pieces and you were able to create a conforming lot, then wouldn't be allowed to build over into it. That would be a good thing, because you always strive to have conforming lots, not non-conforming.
Or a tax.
Right, right.
They'd still have to comply with all the setback requirements and.
So, so is it within a conservation area, or?
It is, it's part of a conservation easement, yes.
So what we're going to do is take it out of a conservation easement and give it to somebody to possibly develop it?
Well, there's no plan, but potentially.
It'll be sold.
Right, and then they could build on it. I just looked at Google Maps, and it, the property, if I understand where it is, is just filled with trees.
And that's what they want to preserve, yeah. That's all, or see whatever they want to.
Yes, but they might not. That's, that's my point. Do you know, do you know what the property owners, the adjacent property owners want to do with it?
I do not.
Okay.
I think it's to expand their, their lot.
Okay. The draft purchase contract, if that's the proper term, has a fixed price of five thousand dollars. Is that, is that the fixed price, or is?
So before we present it to you, we go to the tax collector and Mr. Hendricks, the town freezer, to give us a minimum price, and that would be the minimum.
Okay.
Yes, that is, again, we have to, under the land building law, we present to everybody as contiguous to it, and then if somebody wants to offer more, that's fine, but we're not going to sell it like.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmen?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt 2572-19?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2573-19, ordinance of the Township of West Orange adopting a redevelopment plan for Block 155, Lots 40.02, 03, 41.02, 42.02, and Block 155.21, Lot 40 pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. This is Essex Green Executive Drive redevelopment area. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance.
If, if, before we move on, if we could, go ahead.
Yes, please, thank you. Is that what you're going to ask? Council President. I did say before, when you were in.
People just take over the meeting. This is ridiculous.
I don't, I don't think that should be done, that's.
Why do I even need to sit here? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so I did say, when we were pulling resolutions before, that I would just mention this, and I do like to talk about things on first reading and to answer any questions that have come up. So we're calling this a plan, but it's really an overlay zoning plan, and we are looking at four sites that are up at Essex, Essex Green or Executive Drive, Rooney Circle, Executive Drive, the Essex Green Shopping Center, which was already approved, and the, and 10 Rooney Circle. And just to give you an overview, at the Executive Drive section, this is to permit development on the existing office buildings at 100 and 200 Executive Drive into a multifamily residential development. This is approximately eighteen-point-three acres. The principal permitted uses would be for multifamily residential dwellings, townhouse, residential dwellings, and a public dog park. There would be parking available, signage, and of course, all of the setbacks and building heights that they would have to comply with. Talks about agitney, the plan talks about, with the dog park, stormwater management, lots of things. The Rooney Circle, that's another district, this is four acres. This would be mixed-use building and associated parking areas, four-point-seven acres. The principal permitted uses would be retail stores, personal service stores, or studios, offices, restaurants, bars, banks, fitness centers, medical, dental, psychiatric, or chiropractic offices, and multifamily residential dwellings. The permitted accessory uses would be parking, signage, outdoor dining, and uses which are customary incidental to the principal use. The shopping green, the Essex Green Shopping Center District, we already know the permitted uses there, retail stores, personal service, restaurants, bars, motor vehicle fueling stations, post office civic centers, could have been self-storage, medical, dental, and three drive-ins. And 10 Rooney Circle also is five-point-two acres. The principal permitted uses there will be offices, public or municipal facilities, that's the community component, and a permitted use could also be a library, should that become part of this plan. Permitted accessory uses, parking, equipment and material storage areas associated with municipal facilities and services, fuel plumps associated with municipal facilities and services, and signage. Does that answer your question? Hopefully, that answers your question.
That's us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I have my hand up.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, two things. You mentioned the eighteen acres with a density of twenty-four units per acre. I think that works out to four-hundred-and-twenty-three unit, residential units that we're talking about here?
Right.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to ask in.
Can I just clarify that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, all right, just to clarify that, yes, that would end up.
Let's go through the, Council President.
No, go ahead, just do what you want to do.
No?
I'm answering the question, Council President.
You're absolutely right, Council President.
Do what you want to do. It's okay. Please, Councilwoman, go ahead.
Yes, it would add up to that, but we also have tree ordinances, we have steep slope ordinances, everything would have to comply with that if there, whatever plan comes in. There is no plan. This is just the zoning plan.
Are you done? Your turn.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, Mr. Trank mentioned this about my previous request to have the people who either do the redevelopment study or the redevelopment plan to come and appear before us to present and also to answer questions. Mr. Trank mentioned it a few minutes ago. I wanted to just throw this out to my colleagues to see if there's any interest in getting someone from Higher Grul to actually come and do that. We used to do it a long time ago, but we're, we're starting not to do it, and I just wanted to throw this out, because if we did want to get, do it, at least three of us wanted to do it, we'd have plenty of time to ask, to get on whoever's calendar is.
Go ahead.
I'm going to respectfully disagree, because the public comment or the public hearing was at the Planning Board level, and that's when all of those questions could have been answered, or could, should have been answered at that time. I don't, when we had planners here, I think it was prior, if I recall, it was prior to anything that ever was adopted, it was always a proposal, then that's when they came before us, but never after the fact.
Yes, ma'am.
I would be interested in having an expert here, because it's not often that we're able to make, you know, two or three consecutive meetings in a week, and it is, it does present challenges when we have other obligations as well, so I wouldn't be opposed to, I'd be supportive to, to having them come out to answer questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Guess it's my turn. So we don't have, obviously, a final plan has not been negotiated at this stage, so I am supportive of when a concrete plan comes to us, I definitely would like a presentation. For this stage of it, I'm, I'm fine with, with this.
So, yes, Mr. Trank?
So, so again, as Councilwoman McCartney said, this is an overlay. I think that's the right way to look at it. When you use the word "plan," again.
I guess it's contract, it would be at that point.
Yeah, it's more like a redevelopment, you know, agreement.
Agreement, yes.
Right. So that would be later on. It would have to conform to this, I'm going to use the word overlay, because we all can understand what that, you know, what that means. So, so, so again, the, just so we're clear, if you want to allocate the money, which would be in addition to the contract you've already provided to Higher Grul, because their contract does not provide them to come to a council meeting, then you can allocate the money, you can bring them. Understand the, the process that you are invoking. As Councilwoman McCartney can tell you from her own personal experience, that when Susan Grul testified at the Planning Board meeting, I guess in the beginning of May, the date's probably in here, she was sworn, she gave, she answered questions, Q and A. Members of the public asked questions. Mr. Malanga, cross-examined. And that is the record, so to speak. And so if you now bring her back here, again, you, there is no form for you, not saying you can do, again, the council can set its own rules, but if you now basically redo that hearing, then you're basically creating more layers of potential attack of your decision. So again, most of you attend these meetings either in the audience, because Councilman Krokoviac was there, certainly the, the report in the resolution is the record that you're presented to evaluate, whether you agree or disagree. But again, if you allocate the money, and you want Ms. Grul to be here, and she's available, we'll ask her to come back, but I think as Councilwoman McCartney has indicated, and as we have certainly done it for the last few redevelopment, that respecting the Planning Board opens it up fully and allows every member of the public to ask questions and cross-examine, and specifically, and we respect, you know, Mr. Malanga, he spends as much time as he wants, and I have all the transfers, and they all, just as happened with regard to Essex Green, that was now the appellate, and as you know, the position of this council was upheld by the Superior Court in a twenty-nine-page opinion, and just, I think it was last week, I sent you the notice of appeal. page opinion, and just, I think it was last week, I sent you the notice of appeal. Last Friday, as you all saw, the clerk sent you, we've asked the appellate court to expedite that. Because again, everybody respects everybody's due process rights, but you need to respect that part of what's happening is just attempt after attempt to delay. And again, those things have an impact. We know how long it took us to get to where we are on Main Street, and that took probably decades. And so, these issues, especially in light of the mayor's presentation or whatnot, at least the administrations from the police, are important to the future of the community. And as Councilwoman McCartney indicated, there's some important amenities that are provided for in this plan. So again, I would suggest, obviously, Councilman Krokovjak's raising his hands, but what I would suggest is that after whatever input you, you want, that there'd be a motion, presumably by Mr. Krokovjak, to allocate the funds to bring Ms. Grule here for the final hearing. And if it gets the three votes, then I'll do what I have to do to get her here for that. And that meeting, though, will run as a very tight meeting. We're not going to have members of the public cross-examine her. That's not going to happen. It's going to be for your benefit and your benefit only, to answer your questions. That will not be the time for the public. They can make their comments in general, like they can on any second reading, but it would be for her to make an overview of literally what's here and what she's already presented, and then you to ask any questions if you so choose.
Councilwoman Krokovjak?
Thank you. What I hope is clear to everybody in the council is that under the redevelopment law, all that the planner does is recommend, and all that the planning board does is recommend. We are the govern, as the governing body, we're the ones that decide what the redevelopment plan is. We can change anything in this plan as long as we stay inside the law. We can change anything. And in order for us to do that, I think it would be a really good idea to get somebody that, as obviously Mr. Trank talks about, is an expert in this, so that we can ask him or her some of these questions and get their advice. We don't have to approve anything that's in that redevelopment plan. And as, as we said, it's an overlay zone. It's an overlay zone. It's not, it's not a plan, as you would think, a proposal to develop. This is what sets the zoning and the potential for what can be done on this property. Not only what can be done, but what cannot be done. We can do whatever we want. Look, if we don't want to have a twenty-four acre, twenty-four unit, residential unit per acre density, we don't have to approve that, right? As long as we do it in a, in a justifiable way, we, we don't have to do that. We don't have to do a dog park. We can do whatever, we can do whatever we want. But once we set this, it's going to be a lot more difficult to change the overlay zoning down the road. And that's why I want someone here who is familiar with the property and is familiar with the proposed plan to be here. And as Mr. Trank said, we used to do that, but we haven't recently.
We can, we can.
Yes, Mr. Trank?
No, I, I suggest this point because I think it's clear with Councilman Krokovjak saying, and I, and I agree, the final decision is for this town council. So again, I don't know what it'll cost to get here, but, so what I would recommend, Councilman Krokovjak, is it seems to be your application, that you propose a resolution from the floor to allocate up to, I'm just going to say seven thousand dollars, for Ms. Grule to appear at the second reading of ordinance two five seven three dash nineteen to, to provide any brief data and answer the council's questions.
Yes, Councilwoman.
So, Councilman, if you do have any questions.
I think let's get a resolution before.
Don't make a motion yet, because I want to make a comment, that this plan was approved unanimously by all members of the planning board. I think it's very well detailed and spelled out. Just like I said about steep slopes, I just happened to turn to this page, stormwater, all of that. If you have specific questions, just like you submit questions on every council meeting, you can just submit questions to our planner to, to get your answers.
And I do want to make a point, Councilwoman McCartney is right, we, Mr., Councilwoman Krokovjak, you requested, and when this plan was done, the, the plan that you have before you tonight, when it was transmitted to the planning board for their consideration, I made sure that the, the minute I knew it was going from Higher Grule to the planning board, I said, every member of the council should have immediately. And as, as the mayor said, over and over again, we'll say again tonight, if any member of this council wants to meet with Ms. Grule, or Mr. Barry, or Mr. Greig, ever, on any issue, especially an issue of this importance, we'll make those people available for you telephonically or live to get your input or whatnot. So again, just so we can move this along, because again, I think it's pretty clear, is that the resolution that Mr. Krokovjak is making to spend the money and get Ms. Grule here for the second reading?
So I, I move that we vote to have someone from Higher Grule here at the second reading of this ordinance to answer questions and present on the plan.
Is there a second? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Motion denied.
I could ask still a question.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question.
Sure.
Because as it, I'm so sorry. As it was explained, this is just a zoning overlay. Correct. So, and I was at the meeting last night, but unfortunately got there a little late. Can you just, and I know, attending these meetings, that there have been concerns that both the planning board members have raised, suggestions and recommendations, as well as the members of the public that have raised. And there have been some amendments that have been made from the first time that, that this was presented. Can you talk to me a little bit about the sustainability, when they're talking about, they make reference to, under the sustainability clause, they make reference to incorporating green building standards, the stormwater bed management practices, steep slope and natural features protections, electric vehicle changing stations. Is all that included? And then it further, further says, okay, so that is included. So those were amendments.
This plan was adopted, so all of that, right.
And then exploring the feasibility of incorporating renewable energy into the development, is that something that they're going to do, should this plan, should there be a plan? That's something they're going to do after they've already started a plan?
Yes, that all of these green building, yes. Going down the whole sustainability plan. The green building, stormwater, best management practices, steep slopes, as I mentioned before, electric vehicle, renewable energy, all of that will have to be incorporated.
Into their plan.
Into the development plan, right, into the redevelopment plan.
On thirty-four and thirty-five.
Okay.
We're on page thirty-four and thirty-five. And to your point before, when this was introduced to the planning board back in February, the only amendments that were made were, what was not included in each of the ten Rooney or Executive Drive, each one of the sections, the acreage was not in there. So we wanted to be able to have that in the plan to know, because they had, just so you see, they had maps and sections, but we wanted to know what the acreage was on each, on each one of the sections individually.
Okay. And then with respect to the item three, circulation, where it promotes the connections throughout the development and requires designing improvement, it talks about, consistent with the complete street plans, which included the traffic impact study. And it says it's on page fifteen, but I, I didn't see it on page fifteen.
I just saw the circulation plan.
It's thirty-five. Circulation plan's on thirty-five.
But the traffic impact study, is that included on fifteen? It says fifteen. So it's on thirty-five?
Um, there was a diagram, I see a diagram. I saw it on the diagrams.
So I see the circulation plan.
So in our master plan, we have the circulation plan, and thanks to the pedestrian safety commission, and all of the efforts that they've done, the, we want ordinances now that will support everything that's coming up in this plan. We have been discussing for a long time. And we have some of these ordinances, but not all of them. So I was so pleased to see the sustainability plan in here, the circulation plan in here. So, I, I believe that's why it was voted unanimously, because everything we've been asking for from a planning perspective has been incorporated in this plan.
Okay, so have they completed the traffic and impact study?
There's no plan. Not until there's a plan.
But didn't I, maybe I'm reading this wrong. I thought I saw something that was included on page fifteen.
Right, but we have to have a plan to do the traffic.
Yeah, there's circulation.
You don't know what the plan is.
It's required of the development. This is, it's not required to have the plan. It's required, once somebody submits a proposal to develop the property, then all of that is required.
I think we keep saying "plan," and I, maybe that's what's confusing people, because there is no plan to develop this site.
Okay. Now, I'm sure I read something on page fifteen, but I understand what, I, I understand what you're saying, that it's not there because it's not a plan. But it will be.
Yeah, well, actually, look, I gave my note right here.
Is it there?
I have it written in, that, an environmental and traffic study plan.
Will be done.
Would be done.
There it is on fifteen.
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't see it here. I'm, I'm done with my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Clerk? I'm looking over here just to make sure.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good, Councilman, thanks.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Okay, twenty-five seventy-four dash nineteen, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash ten point one, stopping or standing prohibited during certain hours on certain streets of the revised general ordinances of West Orange, Pleasant Valley Way, is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokovjak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes, up.
Council President, please, ma'am. I just want to say again, this came up last night at the master plan, and again, thank you to the pedestrian safety commission for the efforts, because hell, this is all interrelated with the sustainable jersey. We do have, we are accruing points for the efforts that have made about lengthening the school zone on Pleasant Valley Way, now making the, making the safer, having just done last week the school walking plan, or the walk audit at Redwood School, adding the school zone on Route Ten. So all of these things are coming into play, traffic light on Pleasant Valley Way.
It's a big benefit.
It's a big benefit. So thank you. So I appreciate all of your efforts. It helps with our recertification, and it's just making the whole safe routes to school really a safe route to school.
It is. It's also, just on a side note, it's also, safe routes is also not only safety, but it's a health initiative. It's to get students to walk more, to bike more. We have to make the area safer for them, so they can do that.
Right.
So this will be helping.
Very nice.
Thank you to everybody for your support.
Great job.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance twenty-five seventy-five dash nineteen, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash twenty-three point one, turn prohibitions during certain hours on certain streets of the revised general ordinances of the town of West Orange, three oh three Mount Pleasant Avenue, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokovjak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Excuse me, I'm turning my head each way.
Twenty-five seventy-six dash nineteen, an ordinance amending and supplementing chapter two, section fifty-nine of the general ordinances of the town of West Orange entitled Board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center, is there a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokovjak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. Yes.
We're raising our hands.
Thank you, Council President. Just as some of the other proposed ordinances that we're discussing on first reading, I think it's important for me to raise what I see as some issues with the draft that we have before us, because if it needs to be changed, it will be, it will be faster if it's changed now and we restart the process as opposed to if we don't approve it on second reading.
Which ordinance you're talking about?
I'm talking about twenty-five seventy-six.
Okay.
For, for those of you in the audience who know what this is, it's, it's to create a board to, I don't know if govern is the right word, because it doesn't actually use that word in the ordinance, but to review and, I'm sorry, I, I know there's a phrase in here, review and.
Oversight.
Review and oversight, to provide review and oversight. But I just wanted to raise these issues in case the rest of the council thought that that might be something that we should do. First of all, in, in the proposed ordinance, there's no mention of any legal relationship between the board and the vendor. It would seem to me if, if the board has review and oversight, that there, that there should be some clarity in what the relationship is between the vendor who is supposed to be operating OSPECT and this, this board. So I think that's one thing that we should try to make as clear as possible.
Excuse me, Councilman, I'm lost. Could you explain a little bit, like what, what do you mean?
Yes. There, there is no description in the ordinance of the legal relationship between the board, the proposed board, and the vendor who is actually, the license agreement that we approved last council meeting. Operating it. But there's no discussion of what the relationship is, what they can do and what they can't do, that sort of thing.
Okay. It's the rules and the regs are attached.
Again, and now to verge it, you will be more directly about, especially Councilwoman Matute Brant. The board, the, well, you use word vendor, I'm going to use the term nonprofit. The nonprofit has to operate within whatever the rules and regulations are decided. So, again, subject to what other people's understanding is, you know, we wouldn't put in here that the operator or whoever is selected, who could change at any time, for whatever reason, is subject to, because I, I, I think that the, it says clearly, the purpose of this is review and oversight. So again, as you know, the goal is to get periodic reports. I can't remember, I think they're annual or whatnot. So it seems to me the purpose of this board will be to be, you know, reviewing them and presenting any issues or questions, successes, or potential revisions as we move through this relationship.
Right, but the license agreement is with the township.
Correct.
The license agreement is not with the board. The license agreement mentions the board, but it does not, it, they don't have the same type of relationship to the board that they do to the township in the license agreement.
I guess your, the question is whether, if you're contemplating that, that the board itself would have authority, authority over the not-for-profit, or is the board going to report back to the council who has the authority over the not-for-profit? I think that's the way it's usually done.
Right. It's not, it's not a separate five oh one C three or anything else. This is a, a creature of you, of, of the tab, this board.
The, the ordinance does not give the board any requirements to report back to the council.
Well, if I may, I would challenge that, inasmuch as while it doesn't specifically spell that out, there is a council liaison that will be appointed to report back to the council with the oversight. And with respect to the relationship, it's not something that, the intent is not to micromanage. It is to provide oversight with respect to programming and use and operation of Oscar Schindler. So we're not overseeing the, the five, the, the Pleasant Valley Performing Arts. We're overseeing what, what the use of Oscar Schindler is for, the Performing Arts Center itself. And, and because we have someone on there that will be a council liaison, that does in turn give us authority to oversee what's, what's happening with the Pleasant Valley.
Yeah, the adoption, under, you're under the duties, right?
Yeah, and it is under the, the member duties, and that is spelled out, what it is that we will be doing. And the creation of the bylaws will govern the administration, and part of the creation of those bylaws is going to have the voice of the council on there by the appointee of the council.
It's, it's numbered section, article two, section fifty-nine dot one. It's numbered section, Article Two, Section fifty-nine dot one, although I think in the actual, in the actual document, it's, it uses fifty-seven instead of fifty-nine. But it says that we have review and oversight to ensure that programming, that, to ensure that programming is consistent with the interest and values of the members of the community. Now, what that seems to say to me, maybe it says something different to you, but it sounds like this board can now decide whether whatever, whatever event, or play, or music that is being presented by the licensee, you get to decide, this board gets to decide yes or no. I think that's pretty powerful.
So what it says, it reads right above that, the purpose of the Board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center is to provide review and oversight of the operation. It's not intended to read that we have oversight over the PVP, that's not the intent, it's to provide oversight and review of what is happening there. The sole purpose of this ordinance is to make sure that the mistakes that were made in the past are not repeated, that's why it's review and oversight.
So I'm glad you brought up mistakes of the past, because I asked about this at the last council meeting. What were the mistakes of the past?
I couldn't tell you because I was not here.
So how can you fix, how can you fix a mistake if you don't know what it is?
Well, and look, here's how we could, because we looked at the rules and regulations that existed, the sublease agreement that existed before, and made some changes to them. Providing a board that is going to actually function as a board to give oversight, does, that does help eliminate any possibilities of issues.
It's an advisory board like all the other advisory boards in this town, it has no real power or authority, it just, it provides some oversight, it provides some input from the community.
Mr. Kaser, that's not what this says, it doesn't even use the word advisory, all right? It says the purpose...
It's oversight.
That's advisory.
But you also, Councilwoman, you also said, I thought earlier, that it doesn't give them any specific powers.
I'm just reading from it.
Therefore, they have no powers.
They have no powers as it's, as it delineated in here with regards to the licensee. But here's what it says, here's what it says. "The purpose of the board is to provide review and oversight to the operation of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center to ensure that the programming, use, and operation of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center is consistent with the interest and values of the members of the community." All right?
There's no authority in that statement. There's no authority.
They get, they get to say whether they can, they can do it or not.
No, no, it's not what it says.
Review is not what that, that's not what that means.
Okay.
So it's talking about the purpose, it's not talking about, doesn't say that they have the, the legal ability to go to whoever's operating OSPAC and say, no, yes, you can do that, no. First off, you have a contract, you have a contract with, with, with a not-for-profit and an agreement, a license agreement, and that's between you and them, not between the third party.
I know, that's one of the points I've, I've raised. Under, under Section Two, it's, again, it's designated fifty-seven point four, under member duties, it says, "The review and approval of programming for the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center." Now, again, the word advise is not used at all. The Point C says, "The member duties include the review and audit of financial records of funds related to programming at and the operation of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center, which shall occur at least on two occasions, the first no later than July first of each year, and the second no later than October first of each year. However, the Board of the Oscar Schindler Performing Arts Center shall have the authority to review the financial records at any time."
And report back to the community.
And that's an oversight function. The review of records is an oversight function.
So just, one...
Go ahead, Mr. Trank.
Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Matute Brown, I'm just going to suggest that in C, where it says "and audit," okay, most nonprofits says we all know get audits, but it is possible that they might not, and I don't think the intent, and please, correct me if I'm wrong, was that this board would pay for audit, so maybe it should just say the review of financial records of funds.
And I think we did discuss that, and maybe it was an oversight in not removing the audit when, when we were going over it, but yes, it was, it was for review, because there was not a desire to audit.
Can you just make that note, and then that way we'll move it tomorrow, if the council approves it tonight, if it's... So you, Councilwoman Matute Brown, you're suggesting, delete the word "and audit"?
Yes.
Okay, so say the review of financial records.
But even though you're not doing auditing, you still have the authority to review the financial records at any time?
Yes.
And report back to the community.
Because it's something that the council doesn't have, it's not, it's not a power that an individual council person has.
They have to get their information from, from the township. In other words, as I understand it, the role is, they're going to be the watchdog, say, hey, you know, the, the, the not-for-profit hasn't submitted their financials and they should have, and then they go back to the administration and say, oh, okay, the administration then flex the muscles of the contract to go back to the, to the not-for-profit and say, send us your financials so the advisory board, or so the board can, can review them.
So we're, we're essentially offloading at least part of the supervision of OSPAC that's been going on for years and years, and we're offloading it to this board?
Well, I'm, I'm just reacting to what I'm, what I'm reading and what...
I, I wouldn't say offloading it, I think that we, because we want to see a successful OSPAC, that we are assuming some collaborative responsibility and oversight that, that may have been lacking before. That's the intent of this board. Otherwise, how do we move forward? What would you, let me ask you, Councilman, what would you suggest be changed, that, what did you, when you read this, what did you feel needed to be added, edited, amended, deleted?
Well, before we get off of, of the tangent here, I just want to come back to fifty-seven dot four. I'll be glad to talk you about the changes. It says, "The duties include the review and approval of programming." So when I hear approval of programming, and when I, and when I see, read up, higher up, when it talks about consistent with the interest and values of the members of the community, that seems to me to be pretty close to censorship, not censorship, but it gives you the right to say yes or no to whoever the, the licensee is proposing.
Wait, wait, Councilwoman, don't you remember, you made a post on Facebook where you pointed to a mistake that existed in the form of the license agreement? Didn't call us up, didn't point it out, but you made that post, I don't, I'm not on social media, so...
Right, how about if you just get it right the first time, so I don't have to post stuff like that, and you can bring it up, you know, weeks later? Why don't you just stick to the point and stop talking about all this extraneous stuff, trying to make me look stupid? Just direct to the point. Oh, no, 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 you're not doing that, are you? Just direct, answer the question, all right? No, you're not. Review and oversight.
Here's the point, do you want to...
Gentlemen. I just want you to talk about the point that's on before, not about me and what I did two or three weeks later.
I know, you made a very good point on this when you posted it. All I'm asking you ever, sir, is just to pick up the phone before you post, but you made a point on social media, and we immediately went and made the change to clarify that the purpose of this programming, it's not censorship, it's a community effort, was that there be a gatekeeper. What I understand in this proposal, which is why the administration fully supports this, is that what it's going to do is, when there is programming proposed by the nonprofit or licensee, then you go and the advisory committee look at it, and if there's an issue or a problem with it, then we're proactive, we don't want people spending money, we don't want Woodstock there. That was always the analogy I remember way back when we got into this relationship. This is not about having Woodstock, it's about having community programming. So this level, and Councilwoman Matute Brown, absolutely right, it's about having oversight and creating a vehicle so that you can be involved in it, and every member of the community can be involved in an organized fashion, not, not just relying on one member of the Department of Recreation or one business administrator. It's about getting collaborative, so I apologize if you follow the standard, I wasn't, I, I think it's pro, this is a positive step. So again, I do think, Councilwoman Matute Brown, suggestion that you pointed out specific things that you would improve would help us all to move through this, so that it can be successful.
Right. So if, if I wasn't being given the authority to approve programming, I wouldn't use the word, but there's no use of any form of the word advise or advisory in this, and there's no use of the word or, or version of the word recommend. There's no recommend, there's review and approval of programming, the review and audit of financial records. I'm just, I wasn't part of putting this together, so this is, you know, and I got it today, so I've gone through it as quickly as I can. But that doesn't sound like what, what the Councilwoman is saying, that this is some sort of advisory.
Can I, can I just?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I, I did send this individually to every council member to ask for input, not today, but before the weekend. I sent everyone individually a copy of this so that I can have your feedback. You were not a part of the discussions, neither was Jerry and I, I'm sorry, Council, Council President, or, or Councilwoman McCartney. So I sent it to everyone to receive input and feedback, I did not hear back from you. I would have certainly wanted to discuss what your thoughts were, because, again, it's a collaborative effort to ensure the success of, of the gem that is OSPAC for our community. So I read it as review and oversight as you would say advisory. If, if the language of approve is an issue, then that's certainly something that we can discuss.
Well, let's make clear, I don't have an email from you with regards to this, to this board.
I certainly sent it to every council member individually.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Can I, can I help?
Sure.
Can I interject?
While Councilwoman Matute Brown's looking for...
Oh, sure.
No, no, go ahead, I'm, I'm just trying to log on to...
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, so, so as Councilwoman said, we sat last night with, with Camille, I got to commend Camille, she's trying very hard to be as transparent with our organization as possible. She also, just so you know, you know, we, we mentioned coming here to the council and giving a report, as Director Brill does with Downtown Alliance, once a year, come in April before the season opens up, and she's willing to address the council as well, if we have a question as a whole, on any questions we may have at that time. Devil's always in the detail, so just wearing, you know, my hat, I had put together the facilities policies at the, at the school board back in the day, and sitting down and looking at the sub licensee agreement, you know, making, and that will come before us, because that's still a work in progress, trying to add on that, there was an agreement back in two thousand twelve. Very important, I think, again, you know, we, we talk about, we say mistakes, you know, some things just have to be tweaked and approved upon when you start them. So for example, in the language, it talks about the events and blanks, so really, we need more information from sub licensees in regards to, how many patrons do they expect to be participating at an event? Are you having five hundred, are you having two thousand people you're expecting? Are you, are you having food vendors? Are you, you know, so there's a lot of details that need to be incorporated into the sublicense agreement, and so that's being worked on, because that's important, because now, do you have a permanent Pleasant Valley Productions, the, the weight of the, of the responsibility is on them, so when they sub-license out the, the facility, there's, you know, there's a lot that goes with that, so do they have a technician available, or they have a technician, so if you come to sub-license, you would need a technician there, you would need a site manager there from PV, PV. So these are all the things that still need to work out, like I said, the devil's in the detail, how much security would be needed. So this way, the board could also look at the type of events that the sublicensed person is, is going to fill out in these permits. I believe as far as Camille and Pleasant Valley is concerned, the oversight with their productions isn't so much an issue as, you know, trying to get a handle on who else wants to lease out the facility. So there are facilities, we need to really look at how we, how they are subleased out, and that is, that's what's being worked on, and that document will be forthcoming. So as far as the ordinance itself and the oversight, there is more detail, and the rules and regulation, as Councilwoman said, we were reviewing them, again, things get antiquated. OSPAC's been around for a while, you know, we have to take responsibility too as a council, you know, we, maybe we should have been updating some of these rules and regulations as, as years pass, so again, what's in the past is in the past, but moving forward, we move forward, and we look at all the documentation, we tighten it up, and we hope for a successful season. I did note one thing as I was out there last night, Mr. Sares, and I told the mayor this morning, we got to get public works up there, we do have a little bit of a geese problem, so, walking the facility, so we need to, as I'm thinking of it now, before we have the first event, so we got to get public works to, to clean up there, so again, it's our facility as far as abandonment, I've heard statements before, property's never abandoned, because public works is there maintaining it all year long, so they, they are up there maintaining it, so...
Council, can we move on with the...
Yeah, no, I just...
I appreciate that.
But anyway, so again, as far as this ordinance is concerned, if there's any minor language, but I think for the, the bulk of it, for the purpose and of the committee and the oversight and what's going to be forthcoming, I think we'll be in really good shape.
So are you, from what you're saying, are you...
Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Matute Brown, did you...
I can't, I can't get on.
Okay, just want to make sure, I didn't want to, no, I didn't want to, no, no, yes, Council, sorry.
What, what you're saying, sounds like to me, is that this board is going to review and approve in pretty deep detail each one of the proposed programs that the vendor is proposing, is that, do I understand that? So you've got eight different, you've got a requirement for a minimum of eight events, so does that mean the board's going to be meeting eight, at least eight times during the season? When, so, so what is, what, what does the review and approval, review and oversight mean then? What, what are you going to do at the board meeting for an application from, from the licensee?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So it's requ, it's understood that the rec department is going to be putting on some shows, so because it's the rec department from our township, we're certainly not going to have anything to interject in that regard for their performances. If the high school is putting on a performance, we are certainly not going to have anything to interject in that performance. Should there, and I doubt that there will be this year, because there is no time, be a situation where they do have a sublicense, then we will, we will be involved in meeting on those occasions. There's still bylaws that have to be written out together collectively, so that we understand how we would function in oversight. But this is merely a board to provide oversight and review and support the mission of OSPAC.
Oh, I thought it was helping with the supervision, is that not...
Well, that, that is oversight, Councilman.
Okay. So I, I heard, I think it was you that who said, said something about transparency, and if transparency is one of the goals, I think the ordinance should say that explicitly, and it should require actions related to transparency to happen. So I think it should require the taking of minutes and posting them on the town website, I think it should require the board to conduct itself according to the Open Public Meetings Act, and conduct all business in public, so that the public has the ability to attend. I'm sorry, Mr. Trank, I'm speaking.
Mr. Trank.
Thank you. It should require, yes, and you're, you're interrupting me, and it's not allowed.
Councilman, just, ignore Mr. Trank and finish your comment, sir.
Perhaps you could direct Mr. Trank to ignore me when I'm talking.
No, I did, I made a comment, but just continue, Councilman, you have the floor.
It should require the board to ensure that the town posts the annual report and financial statements and the audits, and to advise the public of any problems or noteworthy issues.
Let's look at that.
There are, there are numerous typos in, in the proposed ordinance, somebody needs to go back and fix that, all the words that should say member, they say members, the, the numbering of the sections is, is incorrect. I just also want to point out that of the five members that are proposed, one is appointed by the mayor, two are appointed by two town... by the mayor, two are appointed by two town departments, which are legally under the management of the mayor, the fourth is a nonprofit receiving substantial financial subsidies from the township provided at the direction of this mayor and approved by the council majority. To me, this doesn't sound sufficiently independent. And I think maybe there should be some consideration given to perhaps asking the drama and music departments at Seton Hall University and Montclair State University to consider appointing people to be truly independent and maybe SOPAC. I mean, I come from the private sector. The best practice in corporate boards, in the corporate board world, is to have a majority of the directors be totally independent. It also allows for reappointment. And I don't think that's a particularly good idea. I think you should require that there are new eyes that come to see this every three years. These are three-year terms. The terms aren't staggered, so if you do move them all at one time, you'd have a brand-new board. And I don't think that's a good idea. I think staggering would be better. And even though it gives the council approval of all of the members, it doesn't say anything about whether the council can remove any board members. I think maybe that should be something that should be considered. And if, if, if indeed the programming is, if, if the, if as it says, it's approval of programming, I think you should put in something about what happens if the board says no to programming and the licensee or sub licensee wants to appeal that process, how we do it, how you do it.
Not, not, not to interrupt you, Councilman, but can I make a suggestion? Just let me make, and being perfectly respectful to you. Okay, we've already voted to introduce this ordinance on first reading. There was a lot of work put into it. If, if you have suggestions or anything else, instead of, why don't you just send an email to everybody making suggestions on what you think can be made that you feel would do any benefit to the ordinance? I mean, a lot of hard work, and I know you, I know you appreciate that, I do. But going on, and I know where your points are and I respect your points, why don't you send an email to all of us? So this way, before the next meeting, the document could be presented and it, and maybe somebody will see differences. Maybe Councilwoman Matu-Bran will feel her document is perfect the way it is and the rest of the members. But this way gives you an opportunity and, and I might be disrespectful to you, Councilman, I'm not trying to cut you off, but we already introduced it, it's already reduced for first reading. Let's just move on, do what you would like to do to, you know, what you'd like to send to the ordinance and let's just move on for the rest of the meeting, if you don't mind, sir.
I think that's wise, Council, I agree. Let, let me just say one thing. The reason I brought this up is because we got the ordinance, I don't know what time today we got it. But again, I raise this issue a lot. I don't think on a major piece of legislation like this that we should be getting it the day of the council meeting. So my idea was, let's raise the issues at the first reading because if, if the council agrees that it needs major changes, then we have to start the process over again as opposed to the second reading.
And I respect, and I respect that for it.
That's fine. I think it's wise advice, I appreciate your, your time.
No, no, thank you, Councilman. Are we all, are we all happy with that? We're just, you know, but it's been, it's been moved, it's been wrote in on, so it's there, so it'll be up for, you know.
It was voted on.
Okay. Mr. Trank, do I have to do anything other than that?
No, and I, just hearing Councilman Matu-Bran give his quick overview of his points, I don't think any of them will be major. So I just suggest that the idea's a good one. If he could get us by Friday, maybe his laundry list of items, you know, we could try to address them as quickly as possible and recirculate them.
Okay. Is that everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Good way to resolve it.
And it also has to be advertised, the sooner we get the revisions.
But I don't even, we'll make whichever ones, you know, since Councilwoman Matu-Bran's primary sponsor, whatever one she wants to incorporate, I'm still believing if additional ones along the lines that have been discussed are made after, they're not major changes, doesn't change. It, it's not like we're talking about changing the, the number of members from what I guess is?
It's five.
Five. You know, if somebody wanted to say we want it to be 20, then maybe that becomes major. But if it's just fine tuning, we can obviously deal with deleting the letter S or delete that tomorrow morning, or delete the word "and" audit, and we'll fix the numbering to be 59.
Yes, 57.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Madam Clerk?
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Any pending matters? Councilwoman?
Well, I just want to jump back to the budget for a minute. I mean, are we gonna set a date tonight for a budget hearing?
I was gonna bring up that question.
That was, that was my next question, but.
I, I expect to have the, the budget distributed by the weekend. I don't know whether, you know, how much time you need to review it before we have the here, before we have the meeting from a, we, in order to adopt in July.
Yeah.
You would, you know, if, if we could have the hearing, not this Saturday, obviously, but a, a week from Saturday, that would, you would be able to introduce in June and adopt in July. If you push it beyond that, then you won't be adopting in July.
Will you guarantee, will we guarantee have the budget by the weekend?
Yes, you will have it.
So do my council colleagues feel that not this coming Saturday, of course, but the following Saturday?
What's Saturday?
And, and/or Sunday to do the budget hearing?
Right.
So we're looking at?
The eighth or the ninth?
Both, we usually reserve both days.
Yeah, we, we do reserve both. We've never had to use the second one, but.
Okay, so.
I'm not here the 15th.
We're looking at the 15th, right?
No.
No, the eighth.
Oh, yeah, 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 that, yeah, that I'm good with.
And we all wear orange for National Gun Violence Weekend?
Right. So the eighth, so September, June 8th.
I, I don't like having to turn this around in a week. It's, it's a really lengthy process. I, I don't like it for what that's worth.
So would you say, then, would you say, would you feel, what's your comfort date? The 15th?
Yeah, I would say at least two weeks. We typically have at least two weeks.
I'm not, I'm not here, I'm away that weekend.
So three weeks then.
I'm sorry?
Three weeks.
What's the latest? Three, three weeks.
22nd, it's a big graduation.
And maybe, maybe September.
Are, are we okay?
You have to make sure your directors are available too, right?
I'm sorry?
Are we okay? Directors in August or September?
It becomes, it becomes challenging. I mean, there's no question.
It's a challenge.
The budget is challenging, so I'm sure.
No, no, I'm not complaining.
No, I know.
No, because it gives you more time, right, okay.
Why don't you poll your directors and suggestions to see?
All right, let's keep this thing, so we're seeing the 22nd now? I'm sorry?
It's a big graduation.
We're gonna have to do estimated bills, you know.
All right, so are we now seeing the 22nd?
So what I'm, my recommendation is, I, I hear you, it's, it's rush, it'd be rushed for all of us, but the 22nd, you know, and you're talking a lot of people, families, high school graduations and stuff, why don't you poll your directors to see the, the 8th or the 22nd, what works better? Because you need, you need your people here to.
If you set up the eighth, we'll, we'll be there.
We don't have all our directors.
Okay, all right. No, no, I, I know, it's just, I'm just trying to be considerate to the staff. It is a long, it's a long Saturday.
They have to come, they work for them.
No, I, I know, I know, but we're not giving them much time either. Usually give them a couple of weeks.
Can I get a consensus? What date does the council would like to have?
I, I will defer to my colleagues, since you have had this process before, I'm listening to Councilman Krikor, I'd say that that is too short of a time, and, and I respect that. So can we, can we look at the 15th?
The 15th?
Or? Oh, you're not here the 15th.
You're not here.
That's why we're looking at the?
And the 22nd?
Twenty sixteenth, doesn't matter.
Look, maybe.
It's Father's Day.
It might, maybe it would be helpful if I review the process a little bit, what's required. The council will meet and review and go through and approve budget. Then subsequent to that, subsequent to that, then you have to actually do a formal introduction of the budget. That introduction, you cannot adopt the budget until 28 days after introduction and, and then have a hearing on, in that timeframe. So that's why, and again, it's just, just where we are, if, if you're able to meet on the 8th and 9th, we would introduce at the?
The 25th. Oh, the 11th.
The 11th, is that what you mean?
The 11th. We'd introduce on the 11th, then 28 days thereafter, put you in, in early July, and then, and there's one meeting in July.
Right.
So then you could adopt in July and you could have, finish the budget. And in theory, we could actually set a tax rate because the, at that point in time, because you won't get, they will not set a tax rate until after the state adopts its budget. So it won't be till early July, at the earliest a, a tax rate would be set. So it's possible then. If indeed we can't do that schedule and you push it off, then basically you're talking about an introduction in the middle of July and maybe, maybe.
It's too close.
What's the date of the August meetings?
13th.
Oh, there's not 28 days, right?
It's July 16th and August 13th.
Yeah, so there's not 28 days. So you'd be, you'd be adopting in, in September.
Okay.
I'm okay with the eighth.
It is exactly 28.
I'm good any, I'm good any day.
The eighth you're gonna get every motion one answered will be answered on the eighth because every.
Okay. My council colleagues, what are we doing?
I'm okay with the eighth still.
The eighth?
Yeah.
The eighth and the ninth, correct? All right, can we have a, do we have to make a, a motion to vote or just pick a date?
The council president.
Okay, so I guess the eighth and the ninth?
Right.
In council chambers?
Nine o'clock.
I'm sorry? Nine o'clock, starting at nine o'clock here in council chambers? The public is welcome, but do remember the public does not make any comments during the budget hearings. It's between the department directors, the administration, and the township council.
And while we would normally send the budget topic to you first and then out to the Citizens' Budget Advisory if it's, okay, we, from a timing perspective, because they'll have a week to look at it as well.
Okay.
The, I'll, we'll send them out together to them at the same time, simultaneously.
Thank you. So that's our budget session, that's, so budget meeting hearings are scheduled for June 8th and 9th. Public is more than welcome to come and attend, listen and observe, but no comment made. Next topic, Madam Clerk?
ABC hearing.
I'm sorry?
We have one resolution, ABC hearing.
Okay, we have to close pub, this, the public meeting and then go into ABC. So do I have a motion to adjourn our council meeting and then reemerge as the ABC board?
Second.
Second, Madam Clerk?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
West Orange, thank you very much. Everybody have a great week. We'll see you on June 11th and please try to make the budget meetings and don't forget all our great activities going on. Thank you and good night, West Orange.